Okay, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the December 17th, 2021 virtual meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Timmy Knutson. My pronouns are he/him/his, and I'm the chairman of the ZBIA. The ZBIA Holiday Edition is officially here after an extraordinarily fast year. It truly feels to me like it went by in the blink of an eye, and although we still can't be together in person for meetings, I wish everyone a festive and fun season with family and friends. And remember, the best gift that we can give to one another this season is kindness and getting vaccinated. The Christmas tree in Millennium Park is glowing, Mag Mile is lit up, and with the holiday weekend ahead, I invite everyone on this call to go enjoy Chicago, the most festive holiday city in America. With that, first, I'd like to take judicial notice of the fact that on December 10th, 2021, the governor of the state of Illinois signed a disaster proclamation declaring all counties of the state of Illinois a disaster area due to the COVID-19 public health emergency. This disaster proclamation is in effect until January 10th, 2022. Thus, Section 7E1 of the Open Meetings Act has been met. Second, I'm making a determination pursuant to Section 7E2 of the Open Meetings Act that an in-person meeting of the board is not practical or prudent. Similarly, I am also making a determination pursuant to Section 75 that because of the disaster declared by the governor, it is unfeasible for at least one member of the Zoning Board of Appeals or its chief administrative officer or its chief legal officer to be physically present at the meeting place inasmuch as there is no physical meeting place. Third, this meeting will operate under the emergency rules governing the conduct of remote public board meetings and provisions for remote public participation, promulgated first by my predecessor and now by me, and which are posted to the board's website. In line with these emergency rules, today's meeting of the ZBIA is a virtual meeting that is being simulcast to the general public via live streaming. It is also being recorded. We have established these virtual hearings in keeping with the governor, the General Assembly, the mayor, and city council's goal to continue government functions while maintaining transparency and public safety. But there are technical limitations to this format that we must collectively manage, particularly with respect to the presentation of new evidence during a hearing, the ability for applicants and objectors to resolve objections or amend proposals during the hearing, and the participation of large numbers of people. As a result, any material to be presented to the board, whether by applicants or members of the public, was required to be submitted in advance of the meeting. For those who do not regularly appear before the board, I will go over a few things for those participating. Number one, we are operating under the emergency rules, so for all applicants, objectors, and their attorneys, if you did not send us your exhibits by the cutoff date in time, you will not be able to reference them. Number two, all participants will be listed as attendees within the Zoom meeting until your matter is called. At that time, we will transfer you to a panelist. There will be a short switch over where you will lose feed, so don't be surprised by that. Number three, if you are here in opposition to a matter, when your matter is called, please raise your hands so that we know you are here and may transfer you as a panelist. Number four, once you are set as a panelist, please present your case. Our staff will be presenting the PowerPoint exhibits for everyone as we normally do, so you will not need to manage sharing your screen. Number five, please be mindful of background noise, and please mute yourself when you are not speaking at all times, including now. Number six, in addition, please note that we have a court reporter preparing our record, so it is important that two people do not speak at the same time. If that happens, you'll probably see me muting people. Number seven, if you are an active participant in this meeting, please do not watch the livestream. This will cause audio interference. Let me repeat that, if you are actively participating in this meeting, please do not watch the livestream at the same time. Number eight, please make sure you identify yourself when you are speaking. This goes for attorneys, applicants, members of the public, and board commissioners. Since all of us are remote, we and our court reporters cannot always see who is talking at any given time. I will also be administering oaths for each witness individually to accommodate for this. Number nine, if an applicant or anyone in opposition to the application has any technical issues presenting their case and is unable to proceed, we will attempt to continue the matter until the end of the call to create time to resolve the issues. If unsuccessful, we will continue the matter until a subsequent hearing. Number 10, after your matters are concluded, please leave the Zoom meeting to ensure adequate capacity. If you are interested in continuing to watch our meeting, which we, as always, hope you are, I encourage you to watch the livestream, which is accessible from our website. Now, I'd like to call this virtual meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals to order. I will take a roll call vote to establish quorum. Commissioners, after I call your name and you state that you are present, please verify that you can hear and see me. Commissioner Sol?
Present, I can hear and see you.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sanchez?
Present, I can hear and see you.
Thank you. Commissioner Esposito?
Present, I can hear and see you.
Great. Commissioner Toya?
Present, I can hear and see you.
Thank you. I'm present as well, so quorum is established. The minutes of last month's meeting have been distributed. Unless there are corrections, I move that we approve the minutes as distributed. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner Sol?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, they're approved. Move that we approve today's agenda. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner Sol?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, today's agenda is approved. Now, we're going to take continuances and withdrawals. As for recent process, we're going to run down the list because there are several. So first, I'll go with the ones that I have notes on, and then we'll open up the floor to anyone else who's requesting a continuance or withdrawal. So first up, calendar number 502-21-S and 503-21-Z.
Good morning, Chairman Nick Fatikas, on behalf of the applicant in both of those matters, 502 and 503.
Great, hi, Nick.
Hi, we were, we received a letter from Alderman and Wagisback yesterday asking for a continuance. This is the first time the case is up, so, you know, I, we have no objection to the continuance request. However, we are under contract to purchase the property, so there are contractual obligations. We'd ask for the earliest available continuance date at the board's discretion.
Okay, yeah, thanks, Nick. So we are, our agenda is set for January. February, is that gonna be a problem with the contract?
I don't think so. As long as it's the earliest available, that'll be as good as it gets, so we'll take it.
Okay, great. So again, everyone, this is calendar numbers 502-21-S, 503-21-Z. We are continuing this until February 18th, 2021, and no further notice will be given.
I have, I know if you want to go in your order, I have three more matters that are all companion. Do you want to do those now, or do you want to wait until they're called?
Sorry, hold on, I'm getting a freak-out message that I said 2021. So we'll continue 502, 502-21-S and 503-21-S to February 18th, 2022. And, and yeah, Counselor, which other ones do you have?
So there are companion cases, the first of the three is on page six, it's 520-21-Z. And then the companion cases are found on page eight in the continuance call, 437-21-S and 438-21-Z. And in this case, we're actually working with the Alderman's Office and our team generally to come up with an alternate site plan which would address site access as well as some of the requested relief. And if we could have a February date, we should be ready to proceed at that time.
Yep, perfect. That's my understanding as well. So for 520-21-Z and 437-21-S and 438-21-Z, we will continue until the February 18th, 2022 dates, and no further notice will be given on those.
Great, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Okay, so next up, we have a string of matters, and they start with 504. Yeah, hi, Councilor Borstein.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, right, Scott Borstein from Nealon Leroy. Right, this is for the Lawndale Educational Regional Network. There's actually eight cases. And this, this really only has to do with the parking lot layout, but given that we're still working with the planning department on resolving the layout itself, we just, you know, obviously take all the cases together, so we would ask for a continuance. And I know I heard you say that the January calendar is full. This, this was a unique situation in that there was some confusion, really by the planning department as well in terms of, of the relief that we needed for the parking lot. So it wasn't, wasn't just our, you know, our issue, and so if there's any way, any way to get on for January, we would really appreciate it.
Yeah, so this, this is a long string of cases, and we're, our precedent, and I know you know this because you've been on before, we're doing two months is going to be the minimum without like very extenuating circumstances. So with this string we've discussed, and these will go February 18th, 2022 as well.
Okay.
Great, so bear with me, I'm going to read them all on the records that we know they're being, which ones are being continued. All of these matters I'm about to hear will go to February 18th, 2022, and no further notice will be given. So for everyone watching, it's calendar number 504-21-Z, 505-21-Z, 506-21-Z, 507-21-Z, 508-21-S, 509-21-S, 510-21-Z, and 511-21.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, thanks, Counselor. Okay, do we have someone on for 521-21-S and 274-21-S? Okay, let's circle back to this one. So how about, is anyone here for 37-21-S and 38-21-S?
Just promoted them, Chairman.
Perfect. Feel free to unmute once you're promoted.
Hi, good morning. So, good morning, Chairman and members of the commission. I would respectfully like to request withdrawal of this matter, the special use application. And the reason for doing so after so arduously requesting that you continue us to this date, we unfortunately have lost the contract on the property, so we're going to have to start again, refile, and hopefully be before you again soon.
Okay, well, I'm sorry about that, and, you know, we'll look forward to seeing you down the line when that occurs, so. Thank you, Ms. Riley, and for everyone on the call, so that's 37-21-S, 38-21-S, and these matters will be, are being withdrawn.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, is anyone here for 418-21-S? Okay, sounds like not. So 418-21-S, we're continuing on our own motion. And we did so prior to the hearing, and in case anyone is listening from the matter, it's just because we don't have an adequate appraisal report that discusses our standards for variation, which is exactly what we need. So that one which was continued prior to the meeting will be heard on January 21st, 2022. Okay, is anyone here for the one I think we didn't cover, which is being continued? Either way, it's 521-21-S and 274-21-S. Okay, so I'll just say it on the record. So calendar numbers 521-21-S and 274-21-S are being continued to February 18th, 2022, and no further notice will be given. If someone from DPD is on to speak on that, so be it. If not, we're continuing it either way. So Nancy, are you on?
I am. Good morning, Chair.
Great, great. Good morning.
Um, yeah, we had gotten a, do you need to swear me in for this part or no?
Not for this part, thank you. Yeah, just say who you are, yeah.
Okay, my name is Nancy Razovich. I'm an Assistant Commissioner with the zoning bureau in the Department of Planning and Development. We had gotten, we had been working with the applicant. We still needed some revised plans for this project based on some of the comments for the staff review. And we had gotten an email from the applicant's attorney, I want to say it was three or four weeks ago, indicating that they would not have them in time for this meeting and that they would be requesting a continuance. So that's our expectation is that they're, they're still working on those plans.
Okay, perfect. Thanks for that explanation. And, you know, they're not here, but I understand that's their understanding as well. So, you know, from here, I'll just, I'll continue it on the board's notice or motion since they're not here. So again, these calendar matters, 521-21-S and 274-21-S will be heard on February 22nd, 2021, 2022, and no further notice will be given. Okay, is anyone else here to request a continuance or a withdrawal? And feel free to raise your hand if you're not promoted and are trying to do so. Okay, it doesn't sound like any. Give me just one moment to sort something out before we start regular call. Okay, let's get started. So the first calendar numbers we're going to be calling are 288-20-S and 289-20-S. I believe that we have Tyler Manick here on the special use extensions.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Sanchez. I'm going to be recusing on the, on these.
Okay, great. Thanks, Commissioner.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is Tyler Manic, Shane Benz, Kenyon Schwartz. I'm joined by Lucas Hoflicker, who is the Director of Real Estate for the applicant. We're here requesting an extension on the special use permit to expand the medical adult-use cannabis dispensary at 5648 The 50 South Archer. The zoning board granted this special use unanimously back on November 23rd, 2020. On or about July 14th, 2021, the applicant applied for a building permit under the special use permit. During permit review, the plan examiner identified a few scrivener's errors, one in the resolution which didn't describe the full scope of this property that the dispensary is being expanded in. We've since corrected that resolution, so we're set there. The plan examiner also identified an error in the application because the application didn't identify the correct range of address either. And the permit application generically called out the expansion of the cannabis dispensary, but the plan examiner said it should call out the expansion of the medical and adult-use cannabis dispensary. We've corrected all those errors in the permit application by amending the application since then, and I believe this board has a copy of that permit application. We're requesting this extension simply as a precautionary matter in the event that, for whatever reason, the plan examiner determines that this can't be accomplished through a permit amendment, but requires a full new permit, which we'd fall outside the time limitation. And we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks, Counselor. So I should still get your applicant sworn in?
Hi, my name is.
Yeah, go right ahead.
My name is Lucas Hoflicker. I'm the Director of Real Estate for Ascend Wellness. We are the owner of Chicago Alternative Healthcare LLC, and we are here to answer any questions the board may have today.
Great, and Luke, will you state your name and address for the record?
Lucas Hoflicker, address is 1836 West Augusta, Chicago, Illinois, 60622.
Thank you, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Great. Okay, yeah, this, this makes sense to me. One clarification I want to make, just so it doesn't go on the record that, I, I understand it's not technically a scrivener's error, it's more of a confusion of DOB and DPD having separate addresses. Is that right, Tyler?
Correct.
Okay, okay, great. Any questions from the board on this extension? Okay, thank you both. We'll take this under consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yep, we're going. All right, everyone, we're moving into regular call now, so let's get started on that with calendar number 491-21-Z. Applicant's name is Herbert Johnson. And I want to state just, it's, and I'm going to be saying this consistently through the call. If anyone is here to object on this matter, please raise your hand, and we will get you promoted to a panelist. All right, Mr. Johnson, I see you've been promoted. Can you unmute yourself? Hey, Mr. Johnson, I see you now. It's just, you're still muted.
Mr. Johnson, you see that prompt that says, post is asking you to unmute, you just have to click on that and say accept, or, or you can click on your microphone on the phone. There is a prompt coming up. Are you still in your Zoom app? Alderman, while he's unmuting, I just mentioned that Alderwoman Carrie Austin is here also with us.
Yeah, hi, hi, Alderwoman. First off, how are, how are you? I hope, I hope you, you've got a speedy recovery happening. Good, good. I, before we get started, I always just ask older people when they come on, do you want to be heard at the beginning, at the end, or what do you prefer?
After my constituents speak in regards to this matter would be fine.
Okay, and, and just to confirm, are you, you're not here, are you hearing formal objection? Or do you mostly just want to make a statement after?
No, I'm here for him. I'm in support of you.
Great, thank you, Alderwoman. So let's get Mr. Johnson up on. And, you know, meantime, Mr. Beckley, can we test your sound while we figure out Mr. Johnson's?
Yes, is my sound on?
Yes, is my sound on?
Yes, we can hear you. Great.
Okay, I'm the architect engineer for the project. The building was built. My name is Alaba de Beckley.
Sorry to cut you off. We just got to wait for the applicant to get his sound working and then we'll get started. I just wanted to make sure yours works.
Good morning. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, yeah, we can. Is that Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Johnson, will you please state your name and address?
Herbert Johnson, five twenty-four Farmview Road, University Park, zip code six zero four eight four.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. And Mr. Beckley, will you state your name and address, please?
Alaba de Beckley, three four three Danell Road, Madison, Illinois, zip code six oh four four three. The engineer and the architect.
Perfect. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Johnson, will you tell us a little bit about what brings you here?
Today, the property nine nine three six Aberdeen. We're trying to put an addition on the property.
Great. Can you go a little bit in depth about what type of addition you're trying to do and what, what type of variation you need for it?
What I'm trying to do is not offset, basically. I just wanted to go in line with the, with the property that's already there instead of pushing it back. I think maybe, I think it's, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how many feet it has to go back, but I'm just trying to keep it in line with the property that's already there versus pushing it back offsetting.
Okay, great. So, am I correct that you're really just building, right? It's really only the second floor? No other walls would be moved?
Yes, sir. Just, 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 just upstairs.
Okay. And the, and the reason you've, you've got to come get these variations is because the current walls are technically non-conforming, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, any, any questions? From the board on this one? I actually have another one that comes to mind, but any questions from the board? Okay, Mr. Johnson, and this could go to Mr. Beckley as well. In the street scape of your neighborhood, are there many second floors?
Can you repeat yourself, sir?
Yeah, so we'd like to know what the characteristics of the neighborhood are like. So, Mr. Johnson adding a second floor, will that stick out related to the rest of the community, or do other houses in this area have second floors?
Yeah, the houses bolt on their block and on the side of the block that have second level floor. A majority of them are combination of siding and missionary brick stereo.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Other questions from the board?
This is Commissioner Esposito. Just along the lines of the question that was just posed. How many of the buildings on your block are Chicago bungalows?
I think all of them on that block are Chicago bungalow.
And did you think about, did you consider preserving the character of the bungalow when you designed the addition for this home?
Yes, everything that is existing is maintained. The major thing we're doing is going to the second level and using the stereo siding. Aluminum siding.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Other questions from the board? Okay, sounds like none, so I'm going to move to the older woman. Older woman, Austin. If you could just state your name and who you are, I'll swear you in for good practice, and then you can go right ahead.
Yes, sir. Carrie Austin, Alderman of the thirty-fourth ward. Located on the far south side of Chicago.
Great. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceeding, so, so much as it's applicable?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you. Go right ahead.
I came to support the, excuse me, the addition of this house because it is, like the commissioner said, a row of bungalows. And I didn't want the addition that he wanted to do to stick out and take away from the rest of the character of the community. Additionally, he wants to, to do a three-car garage, which I wasn't sure if they had enough room for that, but in, in the drawings that I see now and the ones that we previously, previously saw, I see that he do have enough room, which will also enhance the rear frontage of this particular property. So I'm in one hundred percent support of the extension.
Okay, great. Thanks so much for coming with your support and I hope you, I hope you feel well and enjoy your holidays.
All right. Thank you so much, Chairman.
Chairman, I want to jump in and just say that no one knows her ward better than the Alderman, so she agrees on this project. I one hundred percent agree. Alderman, I, I still got to call you Alderman, Alderman woman, because, you know, me and you go way back. Just, I'm so glad to see your face and happy holidays and, you know, take care and I'm looking forward to getting a drink with you.
Oh, gosh, thank you. And, and happy holiday to all of the other commissioners. I got one more item coming up, so I'll still be here a minute.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Esposito. I do have one other comment. I encourage the architects to use the services of the Chicago Bungalow Association when designing additions for bungalows, particular to the, particularly the second floor, if you're interested in retaining the characteristics of the original architecture.
Exactly.
Great. Okay, yeah, any other questions or comments from the board for the applicant? Okay, thank you, everyone. We'll take this under consideration.
Thank you all. God bless. Merry Christmas. Happy New Year. So I can, I can log out now?
Yes, yep.
Okay, thank you so much. Merry Christmas. You all. Happy New Year.
Okay, let's, let's keep going. Let's go to calendar number four ninety-two dash twenty-one dash Z. And looking for Counselor Richard Zolke. Let us know whenever you're ready.
Okay, no, no. Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, yeah, we can, Counselor. How are you?
Very much. My name is Richard Zolke. I'm an attorney, offices at seventy-seven West Washington, Chicago. I represent Mrs. Teresa C. Glad, the owner and resident of the property. This is an application for variation to reduce the rear setback for one-story addition to a single-family residence. Property is, property is at the end of her cul-de-sac. It's in a regular triangular-shaped block. I have two witnesses. My witnesses are the owner, Mrs. Teresa C. Glad, and the architect, Gino Ramozzi. Mrs. Glad, are you there?
Yeah, and while she gets settled, Counselor, I want to just state again, if anyone is on to object on this matter, please just raise your hand and we will get you promoted.
Aren't there any objections, objectors, sir?
You know, Counselor, we just do a kind of rolling basis now, making sure since we're, we're virtual that anyone who shows up last minute is heard. So I'm going to keep watching to see if any hands are raised, but right now. Yeah, right now, you can, you can continue onwards.
Do I have to raise my hand?
No. Well, Mrs. Glad, thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Glad?
Yes.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Yes, so you are the owner of the property at fifty-nine twenty-six North Curbs, is that correct?
Fifty-six twenty-six North Curbs.
Oh, my God, I'm seeing, I apologize. Fifty-six twenty-six North Curbs. And you also are the resident there, the resident, is that correct?
Yes.
You were there for over forty years, is that correct? You've, you've been there for over forty years, is that correct?
Yes.
And you live there with your husband?
Yes.
And on February first, twenty twenty-one, a fire occurred?
Yes.
And your home was damaged and your husband passed away in that fire, is that correct?
Yes, he did.
And at, at this time, you're seeking to repair the damage to the home?
Yes.
And so doing, you engage an architect, Gino Ramozzi, is that correct?
Yes.
And in repairing your home, it was your desire to expand your kitchen?
Yes.
Your kitchen was always too small and you wanted to expand the condition into the rear porch, is that correct?
Yes.
And to do this, rear setback was required?
Yes.
And, and the setback will not in any way reduce any of the open space on the property, is that correct?
Yes.
Your building will continue to be consistent with the neighborhood, the rest of the homes up and down the block, is that correct?
Yes.
And you will tend to live in this property and not sell or move, is that correct?
Well, yes, that's my home.
And in the course of this matter, you presented signatures of neighbors expressing support of your project, is that correct?
Yes.
In the course of this proceeding, you signed an affidavit. In the course of this affidavit, you set forth the background and circumstances for this petition, is that correct?
Yes.
And if you were asked to ask questions on any issues expressed in this affidavit, would your answers be substantially the same?
Yes.
Thank you. I would like to ask Mr. Ramozzi.
Chairman, you forgot to swear them and just.
Oh, thank you, Counselor. And I'm sorry, Ms. Glad. Ms. Glad, will you state your name and address on the record?
Name and address.
My name is Teresa C. Glad, G L A B as in boy. Address is fifty-six twenty-six North Curbs Avenue, Chicago, six oh six four six.
Thank you so much, ma'am. And do you swear or swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Great. And while we're at it, let's get Mr. Ramozzi on as well. Mr. Ramozzi, will you state your name and address, please?
Gino Ramozzi, go to Gladys Avenue, Fox River Grove, Illinois.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great, thank you, sir.
I, I'm sorry for starting off without that proceeding and I.
No, don't worry. Clearly, I was so enthralled in the intro, I just forgot. It's on me, so thanks.
Anyway, so now we've, we've already presented Mrs. Glad. And I asked Mr. Ramozzi, sir, are you, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, you're a licensed architect in Illinois, is that correct?
Yes.
And you've been engaged by Mrs. Glad on the Curbs project, is that correct?
Yes.
And initially, the project was to deal with the damage caused by the fire.
Yes.
Correct. And in the course of this, Mrs. Glad expressed his desire to expand her condition. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And a variation was needed to reduce the setback on this triangular lot, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
In the course of this matter, you filed an affidavit describing the various circumstances relating to this petition, is that correct?
Yes.
If you have any questions relating to this, would your answers be substantially the same as those presented in the affidavit? Yes, thank you. I have no further questions.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor. So, Counselor, one thing that comes to mind quick, this is a triangular lot, correct?
Yes, it's, the, the lot exists at the key, at the point of the cul-de-sac.
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, that's a helpful, that's a helpful image to have up. Any questions from the board on, on the lot or what Ms. Glad is trying to do here? Okay, Counselor, it sounds like we have everything we need from your presentation today, but also your findings of fact. So we thank you very much for your time, Ms. Glad, and we'll take this under consideration.
Thank you all. Merry Christmas. Happy New Year.
Please, please do. Have a good holiday.
Thank you. You as well, you as well. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move to calendar number four ninety-three dash twenty-one dash Z. And this is at twenty-one thirty-two West Rice. So you've got either Counselor Kupiak or Plakka here. And while they're getting settled, any objectors on this matter, if, if you're present, feel free to raise your hand and we'll get you promoted. All right, Counselor Kupiak, I see you.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, yep, we can hear you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Mark Kupiak. I'm an attorney with offices at seventy-seven West Washington. I represent the applicant in this case. Twenty-one thirty-two West Rice. This application is for a variation to reduce the minimum lot area from the required three thousand square feet to two thousand nine hundred fifty-three square feet for a proposed three-story, three-unit building with a three-car parking pad. I'm not aware of any objectives in the case. I have two witnesses on behalf of the applicant. I've got Dan Popovich. And I also hopefully have John Hannah of Hannah Architects.
I'm here.
Okay, great.
And so, actually, I think the introduction states it very nicely. Our, this is a lot on a block that already has a number of, as you can see from the pictures, three and actually four stories and three and four-unit buildings on the block of the subject property, including directly next door to the east. I think there's a row of eight four-story buildings. And similarly, across the street, there's some four-story and three-story buildings, new construction that have three or four units. So the proposal for a three-unit building seems to be compatible with other buildings in the neighborhood and consistent with the new construction. Now, the unique circumstance on this is the lot size. It is both, the only relief we're asking for is on the MLA, the minimum lot area. And the lot is both substandard and only twenty-four feet wide. The quirk is, if it was a standard lot at one twenty-five, we'd have the three thousand square feet needed. If the lot was twenty-five feet, strike that, so one hundred and twenty-five feet deep, we'd have the three thousand. If it was twenty-five feet wide, we'd have the three thousand square feet. So that's unique circumstance. He comes up a little bit short at two thousand nine hundred fifty-three square feet. So he's forty-seven square feet short. He's got ninety-eight percent of the requirement, but we're here for a variation for that extra two percent. Was that, my first witness would be Dan Popovich. Dan, are you there? Are you on the call?
Yes, I'm on.
Okay, Dan.
I didn't mean to steal your thunder, Counselor. Sorry. You were going to ask the same thing as I was, so go right ahead.
Good. Dan, your name and address?
Baden-Popovich, twenty-one thirty-two West Rice Street, Chicago, Illinois.
Great, thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. Dan, are you the member manager of the applicant LLC?
Yes.
Does your LLC have a contract to purchase this property at twenty-one thirty-two?
Yes.
And did I state correctly that on this particular block that the property is located on, there are already a number of three-story and four-story, three-unit, four-unit buildings on your block?
I, I would say about eighty-five percent of the block is new construction, four-story buildings.
Good. And also across. Good, and also across the street, a number of three-story, four-story buildings, correct? And again, next door to you, to the east, those four-story buildings look like a string of about eight buildings all in a row, correct?
That's correct.
Good, and you propose a three-story, three-unit building?
Yes.
And you were advised you need three thousand square feet of lot area for the three-unit building?
Yes.
And your unique circumstances, your lot is only twenty-four feet wide?
That's correct.
And also substandard, only one twenty-three deep?
That's correct.
So, you come up with two thousand nine hundred and fifty-three square feet of lot area?
Yes.
So, you've got ninety-eight percent of what's required?
Yes.
And you're asking for a variation for the extra two percent?
That's correct.
Now, Dan, you've got experience building and developing in the city of Chicago?
Yes.
You're familiar with the real estate market in this particular neighborhood?
We are.
And, uh, Dan, did you run your numbers? And is it true that as of right, without the variation, you could only do two dwelling units? And that, in that case, you would not get a reasonable return on your investment?
That's correct.
And you need the variation for the three units, and you do need the three units for a reasonable return on your investment?
That's correct, the building size stays the same, um, so therefore, construction cost is the same. We would have to, uh, sell two units at, at almost million dollars, uh, to make up for the cost. And I think it becomes unaffordable at that point, and the market comps will not support it.
Good, and Dan, did you talk to your neighbors about this project?
Yes, we went on, actually, uh, down the two-block radius every building.
And some of those neighbors gave you letters of support?
The ones we could talk to, given the COVID, uh, circumstance, um, all provided support.
Good, and you had collected twenty-one letters of support?
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, we had submitted those letters previously, and we'd asked that those letters be made part of the record.
They are, yeah, thanks, counselor.
Thank you, and Dan, you signed an affidavit in connection with the case this morning?
Yes, that's correct.
And if I continue to question you, would your answers be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes.
Thank you, that's all I have of Dan.
Okay, great, should we go to John Hannah?
John Hannah, John, you there?
I'm here, I do swear.
Go state your name and address first.
Uh, John Hannah, President of Hannah Architects Inc., one eighty West Washington, Chicago, Illinois, Licensed Architect, State of Illinois.
Thank you, John, and do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
John, is it true, under the zoning code, that a three-unit building is a permitted use in an R four district?
Uh, that is correct.
But the code also requires three thousand square feet of lot area for a three-unit building?
That is also correct.
Uh, in this case, is it true that this particular lot is substandard at one twenty-three deep?
Correct.
And also narrow at twenty-four feet wide?
Correct.
And as a result, comes up a little bit shorter than the three thousand square feet required for the three-unit building?
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, and the substandard lot and the narrow lot, uh, are these unique circumstances, uh, in an R four district in the city of Chicago?
They're unique, that's correct.
Good, and if, and those, the lot size has caused your particular difficulties in designing this three-unit building?
Correct.
But it does have ninety-eight percent of the square footage required, lot area-wise, for a three-unit building?
It does.
And the board has the authority to grant a variation for that extra two percent?
That's what I understand, yes.
And John, did I state correctly that there are currently, uh, as Dan said, a number of multi-story, multi-unit buildings? Three-story, four-story, three-unit, four-unit buildings already on the block of the subject property?
That is correct.
And also a number directly across the street from the subject property?
That is true also.
So, based on that, in your opinion, would you say that this variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood?
It will not.
And John, you signed an affidavit in connection with the case this morning?
I did.
And if I continue to question you, would your answers be consistent with that affidavit?
Uh, they would.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have of Mr. Hannah.
Yeah, so, um, and I wanna, I wanna point out, I see someone from, uh, um, Second Ward staff is on, um, Brian, Brian Pellreen, so, Brian, I'm gonna go ahead and promote you just with the assumption that you're on for this matter. Um, the meantime, are there, are there any questions from the board?
Uh, this is Commissioner Esposito, just to clarify, uh, the applicant is not actually the owner at this point, is that correct? The sale has not been executed?
Uh, Dan, could you, could you address that?
Um, we have, uh, the, we, we have closed on the property, the seller, uh, given the timeframe that it took to, um, get in front of the zoning board, he was unwilling to wait, um, for us to get it, so we had to, uh, close last month because we were at a hundred and eighty days from execution of the contract, and we're gonna lose the contract.
Okay, yeah, cuz you mentioned you have a contract on the.
When we applied, we had a contract that was contingent on the zoning. Um, but given the time it took to bring this, uh, to, to, forth to the hearing, the seller gave us one extension and would not provide another extension, so we would either have to lose the money or acquire the property. Um, given that, um, it's a small, um, only a two percent variation, sort of just went with, with it, so we're in a position where, uh, it's do or die.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, so, uh, Mr. Popovich, just to confirm, so, since you do own it now, it sounds like, I'd like to just amend the agenda on the record to reflect that. So, s- stating just aloud that, um, uh, Mr. Popovich does own the property, so to the extent the agenda reflects otherwise, it's hereby amended.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, Mark Kupiak here, and, uh, just to clarify, um, obviously, we, we disclosed the, uh, ownership when we filed the case, okay? So, when we filed the case, um, and that's actually, and I apologize, Mr. Esposito, for my question, because, uh, I was actually following my, uh, application in notes, so when the case was filed, um, the applicant had the contract to purchase, so when we filed the case, we disclosed the owner as the contract seller. But I think Mr. Popovich clarified, obviously, unfortunately, with the virtual meetings, it takes a while for these cases to come up for a hearing, so, uh, he needed to, uh, close the deal because the seller was demanding it, so yes, we'd like to amend the application and amend the agenda to show his LLC as the current owner, thank you.
Great, thank you, thanks, Commissioner, um, other questions from the board? Okay, so I'm gonna move then to Second Ward staff, um, Brian Pellreen. Um, Brian, so if you could state who you are, I'll get you sworn in before you make a statement.
Morning, uh, Brian Pellren, uh, Alderman Hopkins, Second Ward staff.
Thank you, and do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Okay, go right ahead, what brings you here?
I just wanted to voice support for this project, um, it is a, a good, good-looking project, um, Alderman Hopkins, um, would just like to encourage the, uh, applicant to have a good plan for the garbage cans in the back, cuz from what we understand, there is a three, three-car parking pad, lot line to lot line, and in our experience, we often have some trouble with garbage can placement, so, no objections, just wanna voice that, uh, opinion, and, uh, we have not heard any objections in our office to this project from any neighbors. And Mr. Kupiak's firm did reach out to us and let us know that the letter went out, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, and thanks for coming today, um, we appreciate it. So, with that, any other questions from the board? Okay, we'll take this under consideration, and thanks, everyone, for your time.
Thank you very much.
All right, so next up, we've got calendar number four ninety-four dash twenty-one dash S at nineteen fifty-eight West Lake, and I just want to, um, state that if any objectors are on, please, uh, please raise your hand, and we will get you promoted, um, outside of that, I am going to have, um, Victor or Nancy read an updated recommendation from the Department of Planning and Development on this matter. And I'm also going to pass the host baton over to Commissioner Sam Toya on this one. So, just confirming, Sam, that you're good with that?
I'm good with that, uh, Chairman.
Great, so, Victor, Nancy, can you please read the department's recommendation as, uh, counsel and witnesses get ready, and we'll go from there?
Um, of course, Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll read the recommendation, um. I think you need to swear me in this time, or no?
Yes, I, I, yes, I think he dropped off, so I'll take it from here, this is Commissioner Toya, uh, do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Great.
Um, so, for, um, four ninety-four dash twenty-one dash S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a cannabis infuser facility, provided, one, the special uses issued solely to the applicant, Baked Bugs Company LLC; two, no retail sales, samples, or physical product displays or stock are allowed at this facility; three, no cannabis growing or production are allowed at this facility; four, the development is consistent with the design and layout of the site, uh, floor and odor control plans dated December sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, prepared by Panthague Architects, and the Odor Control Plan Report dated December sixteenth, prepared by Sam Maddox, excuse me, Chief Compliance Officer for Baked Bugs LLC; and five, details and final design for the odor control system and components, including but not limited to the size, type, and location of equipment, filters, rooftop mechanical units, and exterior system exhaust, et cetera, and details on the design and location of the airlocks, the system layout, et cetera, and the final odor control plan report are reviewed and approved by Chicago Department of Public Health prior to the issuance of permits.
Thank you. All right, we'll take the case up now. Counselor?
Good morning, uh, Mr. Vice Chair, Chair, uh, Chairman is gone, um, members of the board, my name is Liz Butler with the law firm of Elrod Friedman, LLP, we're located at three twenty-five North LaSalle Street in Chicago. Um, before I get started, I, uh, I don't see that all of my witnesses have been converted over to participants, um.
Uh, maybe the tech gentleman could help us out there, do they have their hands raised?
Baked Bugs Witnesses, if you could please raise your hand, uh, Dee Anderson, Shawnee and, and Lance Gilbert, it looks like they're joining now, and you guys turn your, turn your cameras on and keep your mics off, please. Um, thank you, tech support, and thank you, uh, Mr. Chair for the accommodation. Again, my name is Liz Butler, and I'm, uh, presenting on behalf of the applicant in this matter, Baked Bugs Company LLC. I'm joined by, uh, a number of representatives of the development team. Lance Gilbert is on, he is the CEO and principal of Baked Bugs Company. Sean Maddox is the Chief Compliance Officer for Baked Bugs, as well as the managing partner of Green Consulting Partners, um, a consultant to the applicant. Erica Andre, a cannabis, um, product manufacturing, production and operations expert, and a member of the Baked Bugs team. George Kissel, the land planner and, um, president of Oakwood Kissel Associates. Dee Anderson, uh, is the community liaison for Baked Bugs Company, she also is the COO for Halo Security Group, who is the security provider for the applicant. Naveen Pathongay of Pathongay Architects is the project architect, um, and he, he is on the call with us today, along with his colleague, Ramon Mesa. James Cap of Reed Construction is the general contractor for the project, James is on today. Shawnee Williams of Illinois Equity Staffing, the staffing consultant for Baked Bugs. And finally, Renee Craw of Abusin Young, the professional property manager for the subject property. I will, um, Mr. Chair, would you, would you prefer to swear all of the witnesses in at one time, or?
We, we can do it, we can, cuz it's virtual, we'll do it, uh, one by one as they come out, all right?
Okay.
And, and I just wanna make sure we have no, I, I know the chairman asked this question, but I'm gonna ask it again, we have no objectors out there? If you, if we do, please raise your hand, and tech assistant can let you in, just wanna make sure before we get started. All right, counselor, it looks like we don't, so, let's get started.
Thank you, so I'll start by giving an overview of the proposal, and then I'll, I'll introduce each of the witnesses for the record.
Right, we wanna know, you know, obviously, we, we wanna go deep on what the effect of the na- this will have on the neighborhood, wanna make sure there's no adverse, uh, you know, impact on the neighborhood, so please go deep on that, so, uh, myself and my colleagues can, uh, understand what we're doing over here at nineteen fifty-eight West Lake Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, we will do so. Um, so, to, just, uh, by way of background, Baked Bugs Company is the applicant for special use approval to establish and operate a proposed cannabis-infusing facility within this existing building at, uh, at nineteen fifty-eight was West Lake Street, which you see on the screen now, this is an existing multi-tenant industrial building. The facility will produce premium cannabis-infused gummy candies by directly incorporating cannabis oil into a product formulation to produce a cannabis-infused food product for sale to the adult-use recreational market at registered cannabis dispensaries, in accordance with the Department of Agriculture rules and regulations. So, um, to, to clarify what the proposed operations are and are not, there is no dispensary here, there is no grower, there are no direct-to-consumer retail sales at the property. This would be strictly a light manufacturer of, of gummy products. The facility, uh, received a license and will be regulated by the Illinois Department of Agriculture. The applicant filed its application with the state for an infuser license in March of twenty twenty, um, and received notice in July that they had been awarded the license, and then received the license on August second, twenty twenty-one. Um, Baked Bugs is an Illinois-based company, it is not a multi-state operator. The subject property, um, is zoned as part of Planned Manufacturing District Four A, which permits many food manufacturing uses by right. Special use approval is required for a cannabis infuser. Property, um, consists of about three thou- thirty-four thousand eight hundred seventy, seventy-five square feet, it's at the corner of Lake and Damon. Um, it's about, I'm sorry, it's about, uh, eight point eight acres of net site area, and again, it's improved with this existing multi-unit, uh, building, as well as a secure surface parking lot. The applicant would take approximately eight, eight thousand one hundred ninety-five square feet of space in the westernmost tenant space in the building. The other industrial tenants in the building include La Fournette Bakery and LM Caterers. We, uh, prepared and submitted site and floor plans, um, as well as a roof plan to staff for review in advance of this hearing. Those plans are shown on the screen now, um. The plans reflect the areas that are designated for processing and producing the gummies, storage and packing areas, there's office and IT, security, shipping and receiving areas. The design, um, includes an employee locker room and storage on the second, on a small second floor, uh, and a required air shower that will maintain the laboratory-grade level of cleanliness for the building. Uh, the proposed facility will include multiple lockable industrial refrigerators to store the unfinished product that has not been through the final stages of, 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 uh, packaging. Uh, and the facility is anticipated to have the capacity to produce about six to eight batches, um, or seventeen thousand cannabis-infused gummies per day. The building plans also reflect, uh, this secured depressed loading dock on the north, as well as the secured parking that's accessed from the, uh, rear of the building. the rear of the building, from the alley at the north. The facility is anticipated to receive approximately four trucks in quantity of shipments that it's receiving or sending out per week, and those trucks will be received in the enclosed loading dock with a fully enclosed Sally Port, which will ensure the safe, secure, and non-visible loading and unloading of cannabis materials. The hours of operation are anticipated to be 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, similar to the other operators in the building and the area. The facility will not be open to the general public during these hours. Nobody could walk up to the building and come in and purchase any of these goods. The goods will be sold at wholesale to licensed cannabis dispensaries only, not to the public on-site. In reviewing these types of proposals for cannabis operators that require special use approval, the city, the Department of Planning and Development, and the Department of Public Health evaluate whether the proposed use will have any negative impact on air quality. And so we were very thoughtful in addressing air quality and odor control impacts. The applicant engaged Green Consulting Partners LLC, who are on the call today, to sign a comprehensive odor control and air treatment protocol for the proposed facility. Green Consulting Partners has extensive experience in developing these types of plans for business operations, for cannabis business operations, and other members of the team, Sean, Erica, Reed Construction, and Pathenge Architects, all have experience in preparing these types of plans. The building plans that were reviewed by the Department of Public Health include design protocols that will mitigate or eliminate any potential air quality impacts on other tenants of the property, as well as adjacent land users and property owners through a number of strategies, including airlocks, activated carbon filtration, HEPA filtration, and advanced oxidation procedures. And I will go in-depth on what all of that means shortly. So areas where, within the facility where odors are generated, where the processing and laboratory functions of the building exist, will be kept under negative pressure. That means that ambient air in those areas can only escape through controlled means. So any air escaping these odor-producing areas of the building will be filtered before it can depart the facility. Fan-driven ventilation exhausts with odor-absorbing carbon filters will be installed in every room of the facility and will, in every room of the facility that will have cannabis or cannabis derivative products. Any air, again, that does exit the building will be directed to the north, towards the remaining, towards the Planned Manufacturing District to the north and away from residential areas to the south of the subject property. This is, you'll hear more about this from our witnesses. We submitted affidavits and plans in advance of this hearing, but this really represents a well-thought-out and robust approach to reducing odors, VOCs, and particulates. The odor control plan, again, was submitted to DPD, was reviewed by the Department of Public Health. We went back and forth, redressing comments and questions from staff. We believe that we've clarified all comments and questions regarding the odor control plan. And again, Sean Maddox, Erica Andre, Pathenge Architects, and Reed Construction are all available to respond to specific questions as they relate to odor control and air quality management. I want to talk a little bit about the security plan for the proposed use.
Yes. Yes, please do.
The security protocol is an important element for cannabis business operators, and so we have thought about that. And there is a security plan that was submitted as part of the proposed findings of fact in advance of this hearing. It's a detailed and robust protocol to address safety and security, both of the facility, employees, and the product, as it's entering and exiting the building. The applicant, as I mentioned before, engaged Halo Security Group. Dee Anderson is on, and she is here on behalf of Halo. Halo is a locally-owned and operated MBE. They design and implement security plans for similar facilities, and their plans are designed to exceed state security guidelines for cannabis business establishments, and that is the case here as well. Halo's, some more detail on Halo, they were established by current and retired law enforcement officers with over 50 years combined experience in the security industry and in designing security plans focused specifically on monitoring and deterring crime and controlling products and service distributions, especially for cannabis business establishments. The plan that Halo designed in coordination with Baked Bugs is a comprehensive security plan. It includes site-specific protocols, such as 24/7 video surveillance throughout the property, inside and out, and coordination ongoing, on an ongoing basis with law enforcement. Dee Anderson, again, has been appointed as the community liaison for Baked Bugs, and in that role, her responsibilities are being the primary point of contact for law enforcement, city of Chicago representatives, and neighbors. To the extent that any concerns related to safety or security arise related to the facility, Ms. Anderson is the direct point of contact for the city, law enforcement, neighbors, and our co-tenants in the building. The security plan was submitted to the zoning board of appeals, again, in advance of this hearing, and Ms. Anderson is on the call and available to address any specific questions that the board might have on the details of the security plan and protocol. I would like to make some remarks about the community benefits, jobs, and staffing as it relates to the proposed facility.
Sure.
It's important for us to note that the applicant qualified under state law as a social equity applicant. And we can talk more about the details of that and what that means. The facility will create approximately 38 jobs. That includes 17 management-level jobs and 10 operations personnel positions. The applicant has coordinated with Alderman Burnett on this and will be hosting a job fair to conduct hiring outreach within the 27th ward and within the surrounding neighborhood.
Very good.
Ms. Shawnee Williams is with us today. She is from Illinois Equity Staffing. Illinois Equity Staffing is a MBE, WBE business that focuses on recruiting and compliance for social equity applicants, and they are the recruiting consultant for Baked Bugs. So that is something that has been very well thought out by this team. The last part of my overview of the proposal is, we want to talk about the community engagement that we undertook briefly before I turn to the witnesses. The applicant met with Alderman Burnett to present the project plans. Alderman Burnett issued a letter of support, which we provided to the board in advance of this hearing, but more importantly, for this process, the applicant met with neighborhood groups, including the homeowners of West Town, the Industrial Council of Near West Chicago, and neighbors of the proposed facility. There are a handful of letters of support that were submitted into the record as part of the proposed findings of fact in advance of the hearing. We also held an in-person community meeting at the property in October, as well as a virtual community hearing. The time, date, and details of those meetings were provided to neighbors and were published in the Sun Times. And I'll just say that as counsel for the applicant, we did not receive any correspondence, phone calls, or inquiries from any neighbors, and no objections whatsoever to the proposed use. The response has been overwhelmingly favorable and supportive of establishing this small business that will create jobs and a light manufacturing use within the PMD. So final remark on that point is that, again, we have our community liaison, who is responsible for coordinating with the community on an ongoing basis. That's Ms. Anderson. And to the extent that there are any further questions or concerns from our neighbors in the PMD or to the south, Dee is responsible for attending and taking part in neighborhood community meetings and outreach, and will work with the neighbors on an ongoing basis. So that you'll hear from our presentation today, that the applicant is led by a diverse management team with experience in physical security, chemical engineering, laboratory management, cannabis infusion, food processing, the culinary arts, all across the board. This is a well-equipped, strong team. So with that, I can begin to introduce the witnesses, if that works for you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Counselor, but you gave a lot of information there, so I just want to make sure any of the board members have any questions before we move on to your witnesses, because you, you know, you gave a lot of information, which is great. You know, communication is good there. And we like to hear about the diversity, too. Any questions from board members before we move on to the witnesses, to the Counselor? All right, Counselor, you can move on to your witnesses.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and we'll make sure to make each of the witnesses available for any questions as they present, or at the end, we can hold the questions, or however you prefer to proceed. I will start with our first witness, Mr. Lance Gilbert, who is here on behalf of Baked Bugs. Again, Mr. Chair, do you want to swear?
I'm in now, yes. So if you want to call him up, and can I, sir, are you here?
He's here.
Yes, I am.
Okay, very good. Do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Good. And could you give us your address, your address, please?
North Greenview, Chicago, Illinois 60614.
And your name again?
I apologize, Chair. I am so sorry. This is the court reporter. I did not get that address.
2448 North Greenview, Chicago, Illinois 60614.
Your name one more time for the board members and the court reporter again, too.
Lance Gilbert.
Thank you, Lance. All right.
Mr. Chair, I have a handful of witnesses for whom we submitted affidavits as part of the proposed findings of fact. Would you like me to get their affidavits on the record and go through all of our witnesses and swear them in, and then?
You know, do we have them in the record? And if we have them in the record, I think we can just hear from Lance right now, because there is no opposition, so we can hear from Lance. We can do that. The clip notes here.
Yeah, we'll go through them briefly, and then we have a whole team available to talk about the substance and respond to questions. So Lance, thank you. Could you please, again, state your name for the record and your title with Baked Bugs?
Lance Gilbert. I'm the chief executive officer.
And you, as the applicant, of course, filed this application with authorization from the property owner, who is Lake Industrial Park LLC, correct?
Correct.
And as the CEO of Baked Bugs Company, you have specific knowledge regarding the proposed plans, the proposed operations, and the proposed improvements for the facility, right?
Correct.
And Elrod Friedman is counsel for the applicant, submitted proposed findings of fact, and an affidavit signed by you in connection with this matter, correct?
Correct.
And if you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with the proposed findings of fact and your affidavit?
Yes.
Okay. We can go through the testimony that was included in his affidavit, or we can continue on to introduce the next witness.
You can introduce, make sure there's no questions from the, you know, the board here, before we move on for Lance. Any questions for Lance? I guess not, so we could move on to your next witness.
And we're happy to come back to Lance, of course.
Sure.
Witness is Sean Maddox, and we'll have him sworn in.
Yes. So Sean, do you swear to tell the truth during these proceedings? And could you give us your address as well?
I do. My address is 23 Corporate Plaza Drive, Newport Beach, California, 92660.
Very good. Thank you, Sean.
Thanks. Sean, could you state your business and profession and explain your role for Baked Bugs?
Yeah, I'm the managing partner of Green Consulting Partners. I myself am an attorney. Green Consulting Partners provides legal compliance advice and application writing for clients throughout the cannabis industry.
And you're also the chief compliance officer for Baked Bugs, right?
That's correct.
And you mentioned that you've prepared many applications for cannabis industry clients. You have prepared, submitted secured approval for over 120 license applications for commercial cannabis businesses across many jurisdictions, right?
Yes.
And as a cannabis industry consultant and application advisor, your team, you and Green Consulting Partners have worked with numerous organizations and designed and implemented various odor control plans aimed at mitigating or eliminating potential odors or fumes resulting from cannabis business operations, as well as VOCs that might be released from cannabis production processes, right?
Yes, we have.
And you were retained by Baked Bugs in addition to your formal role as chief compliance officer to prepare their application to the Illinois Department of Agriculture Infuser License Application filing, correct?
That's correct.
And then you were also engaged to develop the odor control plan for the proposed facility, correct?
Yes.
And based on your experience in this industry and preparing those plans and many license applications, is it your opinion that that applicant's odor control plan complies with industry-best practices for odor control, and that as designed, it will allow applicant to operate its facility without any negative odor or air quality impacts on its neighbors or co-tenants or the surrounding community?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And Elrod Friedman, as counsel to the applicant in this proceeding, submitted to the board the proposed findings of fact, your CV, and an affidavit that was signed by you in connection with this matter. Is that right?
Correct.
And if you were to continue to testify today, your testimony would be consistent with the proposed findings of fact and your affidavit?
It would be.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair, we can respond to any questions that the board has on odor control, or we can keep going.
Let's just be, I like to, you know, make sure I ask if the board members have any questions for Sean. We'll move on. All right, Counselor, you move on to your next witness.
Thank you. I am just going to briefly introduce Ms. Erica Andre, who is a member of the team, but we did not submit an affidavit in advance. Erica, it's, Mr. Chair, is it okay if I introduce her on?
Sure. Go on. Yeah, this is, you know, these are still new to the city, so we like to go deep on these cannabis special use. So yes, please do.
Okay. Erica, could you please state your name, title, and business address for the record?
My name is Erica Andre. I'm a cannabis production specialist, and my address is 2465 West Crescent Avenue, Anaheim, California, 92801.
Great. Do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you.
Erica, you're a member of the Baked Bugs Manufacturing Product Development Team, right?
Yes.
And you hold a Bachelor of Science degree in chemical engineering for the University of California at Berkeley, right?
Yes.
You have over five years of experience in research, development, production, design, with much of that being in the cannabis space, correct?
I do, yes.
And your understanding is that Elrod Friedman, as applicant's counsel, submitted your CV to the board in advance of this hearing, right?
Yes.
And you designed, you assisted with the design and preparation of the odor control and air quality management plans, correct?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify to the board today, your testimony would generally relate to manufacturing processes, laboratory testing, and air quality and odor control protocols, right?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I don't have any other questions for Erica at this time, but she remains available to respond to questions. Um, Mr. Chair, I I don't have any other questions for Erica at this time, but she remains available to respond to questions. On odor control and how the protocol um satisfies the requirements. Under the Chicago Department of Public of Public Health standards.
Yeah, I've got the letter recommendation here, so we know that the Chicago Department of Public Health uh obviously went deep on this, so. But I want to make sure to see if any board members have any questions for Erica as well. All right, counselor, I guess not. Move on to your next witness.
Thank you. Um, I'll uh. Next, I'll introduce Mr. Kissel. Mr. Kissel, could you please state your name, address, um and your business and profession for the for the record?
Sure, um, my name is George Kissel. I'm the president of Oakland Kissel Associates with offices at one forty-one West Jackson in Chicago. I'm a licensed architect and certified planner, with nearly forty years of experience in the field of zoning and urban planning.
Yes, we know George very well. Uh, we see him on a monthly basis, so welcome back, George.
Um, will you swear, George, in?
Yes, I will. Do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings, George?
I do.
Very good. Proceed, please.
Thank you. George, you were retained by the applicant in this matter to conduct an urban planning analysis of the proposal. To establish this cannabis infuser in uh PMD four A in the Kinsey Corridor. Planned Manufacturing District at the subject property, right?
That is correct.
And did you prepare a report uh that detailed your analysis and your findings and conclusions?
I did.
And uh to to your knowledge, did uh Elrod Friedman, as counsel for the applicant, submit that report? Uh, to the board in advance of this hearing as part of the proposed findings of fact?
Yes, they did.
And if you were to continue to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with findings and conclusions in your report? Um, specifically that the proposed development is consistent with the criteria for approval of a special use. Um, as well as the specific criteria for adult-use cannabis dispensaries within planned manufacturing districts?
Uh, with infusers, yes.
Thank you for the correction.
Yes.
Infusers. Um, Mr. Chair, we can have uh George at this time go in depth on his analysis. Uh, of the land use context here, um or we can continue to introduce our our next witness.
Um, let's see if there's any questions for George. Um, and you know, like I said, there's no opposition, so we can, you know. We don't have to really go real deep. Uh, just I I think we're, I think uh the board and myself are getting a feel of this project. So any questions for George? All right, counselor, we can move on to your next witness.
Thank you. I'm gonna go to uh to Ms. Dee Anderson next. Uh, Dee, could you please state your full name, your title, and your business address for the record?
Yes, my name is DeAndrea Anderson. I am Chief Operating Officer of Halo Security Group and Community Liaison. For the proposed Big Bud facility at nineteen fifty-eight West Lake Street.
Very good. Uh, Dee, do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Very good. Proceed, counselor.
Thank you. And before I proceed, um Dee, would you prefer that we uh call you by your your full name?
Dee is fine.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you. Um, Dee, you you mentioned you're the chief operating officer at Halo Security Group. You're the community liaison for the proposed Big Bud's facility. Just want to get that one on on the record again. Is that right?
That is correct.
And you you understand that Elrod Friedman, as counsel to the applicant, submitted to the board in advance of this hearing. The proposed findings of fact, which included an affidavit signed in connection with this matter, right?
Correct.
And if you were to continue to testify today or answer any questions that the board might have. Your testimony uh would relate to uh the applicant's robust security plan that was submitted to the board in advance of this hearing. And to your role in implementing the applicant's community engagement and diversity in management policies. And all of that testimony would also be consistent with your affidavit, right?
Yes, it would.
Okay, um, I have no further questions for this uh witness at this time. But we are happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Uh, I I'm good. This was definitely, um, we went pretty deep on this, and I like that. Uh, but I'm gonna once again ask if there's any questions from the board before we wrap this up. Any questions? I guess not. Uh, so that's that's a good thing. That's a good thing. Um, all right, counselor, we'll take uh, we'll take this under consideration. And everyone have a great holiday season.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Same to you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, we can move on to our next one, uh four ninety-five dash two one dash Z, thirty-two forty-four Lincoln Avenue.
Thank you, Chairman. This is Nick Fatikas on behalf of the applicant. Uh, we should have two witnesses promoted. Uh, Zafar Hussein and Lazlo Simovic, our project architect.
All right, we want to see if they're on or if we have to have the uh tech assistant let them in. Did they raise their hand if they're not in?
Yeah, Zafar is on, and I'm waiting to confirm Lazlo. Hang on one sec. Lazlo looks to be on as well.
All right, great, Nick. And uh, again, this is a variance, so I want you to go deep on what's the hardship. And make sure you point out to board members and myself that this was not a self-created hardship. So you've been in front of me before, Nick, so I can give stick to the cliff notes, but I know it comes to variances. I want to know what the hardship and make sure it's not self-created, so.
Okay, um, well, with that, Chairman, again, for the record, Nick Fatikas from the Law Offices of San Banks. I'm here on behalf of the applicant and property owner, thirty-two forty-four Lincoln LLC. The applicant, again, owns the property at thirty-two forty-four through forty-six North Lincoln Avenue. And as you can see from the uh site plan showing or the uh aerials showing on uh the screen right now. Um, the subject zoning lot is uniquely shaped and contains two street frontages. Uh, the primary frontage is along North Lincoln Avenue, uh where the lot measures twenty-five feet wide. The secondary frontage is along West Melrose Street, um which actually also measures twenty-five feet wide. Um, and as you also again can see, the uh lot is located just north of that intersection. At Lincoln Avenue and uh West Melrose, and again, Lincoln runs at an a slight angle. There's no alley uh that serves this uh section of the block, and particularly this property. Um, the applicant uh has taken down the existing one-story building um that previously was at the property. And intends to develop site with a new four-story mixed-use building. The proposed building will contain retail space along uh Lincoln Avenue and seven residential units above. Um, due to the unique lot size and shape and the lack of alley access, the applicant is seeking a variation. To reduce the rear setback for floors containing residential units from thirty feet to one feet. Uh, again, two witnesses testifying on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Zafar Hussein and our project architect, Mr. Lazlo Simovic. Uh, and with that, I'd like to call my first witness.
Please do.
Uh, Zafar, are you on with us?
Yes.
Uh, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Uh, Zafar Hussain, two six six two North Lincoln, Lincoln Park.
Very good, Zafar. Do you swear uh to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Very good. Proceed.
And because, Zafar, you are the manager of the applicant, thirty-two forty-four Lincoln LLC?
Yes.
And that entity owns the subject property at thirty-two forty-four through forty-six North Lincoln Avenue. Is that right?
Correct.
And as I described it, the twenty-seven hundred square foot site is uniquely situated between uh North Lincoln Avenue and West Melrose Street, correct?
Correct.
And you're proposing to develop the property with a new four-story mixed-use building, right?
That's correct.
And again, you're seeking a variation to permit the project because of the lot's unusual size and shape and its lack of uh typical alley access.
Correct.
Uh, and before we conclude your uh testimony today, is it true that you worked with the Forty-seventh Ward Zoning Advisory Council? As well as Alderman Matt Martin on the project being presented to the board today?
That's correct.
And in fact, we uh secured support for a type one zoning change um to waive the off-street parking requirement uh for the development. Is that right?
Correct.
And that was actually the primary issue during the community review process. Um, as we were asked not to introduce a new driveway or curb cut fro- on the West Melrose Street frontage. Uh, which is primarily residential in nature.
That's correct.
And again, uh, the plan being presented today uh is ultimately what the community organization and uh city council approved. Uh, a- as a type one zoning change.
Correct.
Uh, Zafar, is it your understanding that my office filed a witness statement on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Lazlo, are you also with us?
Let me ask Zafar a couple of questions. I know you said you uh, Counselor, uh, you met with the Forty-seventh Ward. Zoning Advisory Committee, and you also met with the Alderman, which is great. But I know over in this part of Lakeview, uh, it's very active Lakeview Chamber of Commerce. I also know there's uh, you know, very active neighborhood groups. Did you also meet with the Chamber of Commerce and the neighborhood groups in this uh section of Lakeview?
Yeah, that's a, thank you for clarifying that. Um, the Forty-seventh Ward Zoning Advisory Council coordinated and included. In particular, the Lakeview Chamber of Commerce in our review process. Um, so it was a little bit more cumulative with the various groups being represented. Um, the primary concern was maintain, and again, my understanding of the primary concern was maintaining some level of retail. Along Lincoln Avenue, and this project and this building design do that. Albeit, it is a smaller retail unit, given the constraints of the property. Um, we did make the commitment to retain a retail presence on Lincoln Avenue. Um, and and that was done through coordination with the Lakeview Chamber of Commerce in particular.
Very good. And and so you, I'm glad to hear that you spoke with the Lakeview Chamber of Commerce, but you also have Lakeview Citizens Council. That takes uh that up to, again, I'm glad you spoke with the Forty-seventh Ward Zoning Com- you know, Committee and the Alderman and the Chamber. But I'm just wondering if you also talked with the Lakeview Chamber, uh, the Lakeview Community Group, Lakeview Citizens Council, which is very active in Lakeview. And obviously, Lincoln and Melrose is Lakeview. So I was wondering if you talked to them as well.
Not not directly or separate from the zoning advisory council process. Again, we hosted a community meeting. Members of the general public were invited to join the meeting. We also had uh input again from the Lake uh, the Chamber of Commerce. There was no other outreach, and I, again, I I want to just stress that the focus of the comments or the concern was retaining retail on Lincoln. Which in this case we are. And then secondary, the more neighborhood-based concern was not introducing. That driveway or curb cut for the parking off of Melrose. Um, and again, that that's how we landed on the plan that's being presented to the zoning board today.
Right, I mean, we have no opposition here, so if if they were against it, I'm sure they would have a representative here. So, thank you for clarifying that, uh, Nick. All right, proceed.
Lazlo, can you please state your name and address for the record again, please?
Lazlo Simovic, sixty-five twelve North Artisan, Chicago, Illinois.
Here, you want to uh swear in?
Let me burn in. Do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Very good. Proceed.
And Lazlo, uh, again, you're a licensed architect in the state of Illinois?
I am.
And you've testified in that capacity many times before this board, is that right?
That's correct.
And you designed, you've designed a program for the proposed four-story mixed-use building at the subject property?
Yes.
And is it your professional opinion that the atypical lot size and shape, together with the lack of alley access. Create the particular hardships or practical difficulties in this case?
Yes, it certainly was a challenge.
And still, though, you believe that the uh, if the variation is uh approved by the zoning board. The resulting mixed-use building will be consistent and compatible with the other mixed-use and multi-unit buildings in the immediate area?
That is correct.
Lazlo, is it your understanding that my office filed a witness statement on your behalf in this case?
You have.
And if uh you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes.
Thank you, Chairman. That concludes the applicant's case in chief. Again, we'd be happy to answer any questions you or the board members have about our uh proposal.
Very, very good, Nick. Any questions from the board? All right, we will take this uh under consideration. Thank you, and happy holidays.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Okay, very good. Um, let's, all right, I think, let's take a fifteen-minute break. And then we come back, I think our chairman will take the seat again. So it is, time is it exactly right now? It is, I'm trying to get there, ten forty-five, so let's take a break to eleven AM. And then when we come back, uh Chairman, uh, we'll take uh, take back the seat. So we'll see everyone at eleven, eleven AM. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I move that we reconvene this December seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Commissioner Toya, seconds. Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes, and I apologize for not taking a roll call when we went on recess. You know, I, 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 you know, I heard, I know Zurich wanted to get something to eat real quick. So I wanted to make sure I went quick there. Anyway, sorry about that, here. I just want to go on record that we did not take a roll call when we went on recess. So, thank you.
I mean, after we're reconvening, you know, Commissioner Toya, I thank you, um, for leading on those last.
All about teamwork, all about teamwork.
Apologize for nothing. Um, okay, great. So let's move to calendar number four ninety-six dash twenty-one dash Z. This is at sixteen twenty-eight North Harding Avenue. And, um, I believe that, uh, we have Counselor Fatikas still on.
Yes, Chairman, again, uh, Nick Fatikas, uh, here on behalf of the applicant. And we should have two witnesses, um, Noman Roll, I'm sorry, Noel Roman Junior, um, as well as our project architect, Louis Martinez.
Great, thanks, counselor. And if anyone is here to object on this matter, please just raise your hand and we will get you promoted. The issue is that the existing building is non-conforming with respect to its side setbacks.
And as you can see from the survey we provided with our finding of facts submitted, uh, the existing building was built favoring the north side of the subject lot. So in order to permit the dormer additions so that they follow building wall lines, uh, the applicant is seeking variations to reduce the north side setback and the combined side setback total. And to be clear, the proposed setbacks are exactly, uh, what exists at the property today. Um, there are two witnesses again available to testify on behalf of the applicant, uh, Noel Roman Junior and our project architect, Mr. Louis Martinez. Uh, and with that, Chair, I'd ask to call my first, uh, witness, Mr. Roman.
Great, Mr. Roman, um, please just state your name and address.
Yes, Noel Roman, sixteen twenty-eight North Harding, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six four seven.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Um, Noel, again, you are the property owner at sixteen twenty-eight North Harding?
Yes.
And you currently live in one of the two units at the property, is that right?
Yes.
And as it described in my introduction, uh, the subject property, uh, or I'm sorry, you're proposing to permit dormer additions, um, to the, the building's attic level, is that right?
Yes.
And you're doing this so that you can increase the size of the second floor unit which you and your family live in, is that right?
Yes.
Uh, currently, the attic space, although it's physically there, it's unfinished today, is that right?
That's correct, yes.
And again, provided the variations are approved, your plans call for reorganizing and enlarging the unit's kitchen, um, the dining room area and the family room, all on the second floor, is that right?
Yes.
And you'd create a new primary bedroom and two smaller bedrooms on the third floor, is that right?
Yeah.
And as, uh, again, as we stated, in order to permit the project, you're requesting variations so that the dormer additions can follow the existing building wall lines of the building below, correct?
That's correct.
Uh, Noel, is it your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Uh, Louis Martinez, are you, are you with us?
Yes. Yes, I am. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Martinez, can you state your name and address, please?
Louis A. Martinez, twenty-one thirty-two West Concord Place.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you.
And, uh, Louis, again, you are a licensed architect, architect in the state of Illinois?
Yes, I am.
And you've previously testified in that capacity before this board, is that right?
Yes.
Uh, you designed the proposed dormer additions to the principal building at the subject property?
That is correct, yes.
And is it your professional opinion that the existing non-conforming building footprint on the twenty-four-foot, uh, wide lot create the practical difficulties or particular hardships in this case?
It's correct.
Uh, but again, the proposed side setback conditions will match identically to the existing side setback conditions on the subject lot today.
Yes, that's correct.
And again, that's because our dormers, uh, would follow the existing building wall lines straight up, uh, on the property or on the building.
Yes.
And Louis, is it your understanding that my office filed the witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes, that is correct.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes, it would be.
Thank you, Chairman. The only thing that I, uh, left out of my, uh, applicant's, uh, testimony is that he did meet with both of his immediate neighbors. Um, he's, he's quite friendly with both neighbors. And we're not aware of any objection. In fact, uh, we were encouraged to move forward with, uh, the project by those neighbors. So I just wanted to make sure that was also, uh, part of the record today.
Yeah, thanks for that, counselor. And with that, I'll just, uh, uh, give another opportunity for anyone objecting to raise their hands. It's just, uh, we're, we're noting this consistently now just for best practice. So I didn't see any hands earlier, but I just want to see if there are any now. And Counselor, you can keep going. Meantime, if there's anything else.
No, but actually that concludes our, our case in chief. Uh, we'd be happy to answer any questions you or the board members might have about the program.
Great. Any, any questions from the board on this one?
This is Commissioner Esposito. Just for clarification, I, we just saw an image that shows dormers. Are those already completed?
No, though there are portions of the building that already exist, but that's all unfinished attic space. So none of what's being proposed as part of the applicant's plan exists. Um, those are all existing conditions that were not, uh, created by the applicant. We're now coming in to try and finish out the attic level, um, and incorporate the bedroom. So really, again, right now, as the applicant testified to, the third floor is un, is unimproved. It's, it's vacant, um, unfinished attic space.
Okay, I understand that. But the image we're looking at right now, for example?
Yes.
This dormer, is this?
So that, that will remain, and then that'll extend further back. So yes, that's an existing condition. But I want to be clear, that wasn't something the applicant built or permitted or built without a permit. What we're trying to do is bring that all into compliance and keep those building walls, uh, flush.
So the appearance from the street will remain unaltered?
Identical, exactly.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, we've got the information we need, so we'll take this one under consideration.
Great, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor. Thanks, everyone. Okay, let's go to calendar number four ninety-seven dash twenty-one dash S. I believe we've got some objectors on this matter. So if you need to be promoted, please raise your hand and we'll make sure that you're able to speak. And meantime, I'm going to go ahead and read the department's recommendation as everyone gets settled. And if you're a call-in, um, for this matter, we have, uh, we've given you permission to talk. It's a little trickier to get you promoted, but you have permission to talk. So we'll make sure that you're able to when we get to that. So for calendar number four ninety-seven dash twenty-one dash S, the Department of Planning and Development is not opposed to the proposed non-accessory parking lot with sixty-four parking spaces, provided that the special use is issued solely to the applicant, JRA Holdings LLC. And the development is consistent with the design and layout, the plans and drawings dated December seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, prepared by Axios Architects and Consultant. Okay, before we get started, um, come on. Okay, before we get started, um, can will you explain to the call-in just to make sure that they know how to unmute themselves and so we can confirm that they are able to speak?
Yes, uh, Jack Salley, you can press star six uh, when you want to, when you wish to speak. So you will press star six on your phone if you want to try that now.
Can you try that now so that we can confirm, I believe you're with the applicant, but I want to confirm.
Jack Salley is now unmuted, can you speak, you say something?
Yes, sir, I'm on.
Perfect, and Jack, you are with the applicant, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, good, we'll circle back to you, we're just doing some process stuff first. Um, sure. And we have, we have Alderman Quinn on, um, Alderman, you have, you have your hand raised. Um, if you could unmute yourself and just confirm that you're here to object?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Um, I'll give a little bit of an overview of our um, our objection process. Um, uh, Alderman, and then I can circle back to you, do you have a, um, do you have an opinion on whether you'd like to speak at the beginning, or the end, or during the objection period?
At your preference, Mr. Chair.
Okay, good, then I'll give an overview of the objectors' process now, and um, we'll go with that one. So Counselor Fatikas is well aware of this process. Um, how we run when there's an objector is first we'll take the case in chief um, from the applicant. We'll get all the applicant's witnesses on, the board will ask questions of the applicant of clarification, and then we will go over to the objector's side. Um, the objector's side will then state their objection, and they're also at that time able to ask questions of the applicant. Um, we'll make sure everyone who is on to object has an opportunity to speak so long as it is not repetitive. Um, I always make that clear that in these, uh, in this meeting setting, it is truly quality over quantity, so we need new objections when objectors speak. Um, we'll then go back to the applicant's side and they'll have short time for rebuttal. Um, this whole process, the board will be asking questions of clarifications and um, once we get through all those questions, um, the applicant can close and we will take it under consideration. Does anyone have questions on that process before we get started? Okay, with that, Counselor, you can go ahead and take it away.
Good, thank you again, uh, for the record, Nick Fatikas on behalf of the applicant and property owner, JRA Holdings LLC. Again, the uh, that entity owns the subject property at fifty-nine fourteen South Central Avenue. The uh, subject site contains approximately twenty-five thousand eight hundred and twenty-five square feet of total lot area, and it's immediately, uh, located immediately across the street from Midway Airport. Uh, today, the site is improved with a surface parking lot, and that, those improvements are actually reflected in the aerial view uh, on the screen today, or on the screen right now. And uh, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, we submitted photos of the existing conditions uh, with our findings of fact. We also included ZBA resolutions from nineteen eighty-six, which allowed for the original establishment of a surface parking lot, excuse me, as an accessory off-site lot for Monarch Air Services Incorporated. Uh, the corresponding call numbers were sixteen eighty-six S and two fifty-two eighty-six S respectively. The uh, applicant is now proposing to establish the property as a non-accessory parking lot with sixty parking spaces. Uh, given our proximity to the airport, we're proposing to provide remote parking services for travelers to and from the city. In order to permit the non-accessory parking lot use, the applicant uh, is seeking a special use because the subject property is located in an M-one zoning district. I have three witnesses available to testify today, on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Jack Salea, our project architect, Mr. Bill Kokalios, and our MAI appraiser, Mr. Terrence O'Brien. And Chairman, just as a quick uh, housekeeping matter, our original application proposed sixty-four non-accessory parking spaces at the site. Um, in order to bring the lands, or the parking lot into full compliance with the interior landscaping requirements, uh, we added in, uh, additional interior landscaping islands. Uh, and those islands reduced the total number of uh, legal parking spaces from sixty-four to sixty. Um, those changes again are reflected in the most current plan set, uh, which was submitted to DPD, and I just wanted to reference that uh, for the, for the record.
Yeah, thanks, Counselor, and let me, um, I'll just state it on the record, because the agenda says sixty-four. Exactly, so then for this calendar, four ninety-seven dash twenty-one dash S, we're gonna amend the subject on the record to application for special use to establish non-accessory parking lot with sixty parking spaces.
And with that amendment, uh, Chair, I'd ask to call my first uh, witness, uh, Mr. Jack Salea.
Great.
Uh, Jack, are you, you still on?
Yeah, I'm on.
Okay, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, Jack Salea, one eighty South Western Avenue, Carpentersville, Illinois, six zero one one zero.
Thank you, and uh, Mr. Salea, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, sir.
Great.
And Jack, you are the manager of the applicant, JRA Holdings LLC?
Yes.
And again, that entity owns the subject property at fifty-nine fourteen South Central Avenue, is that right?
Yes.
As I described in my introduction, the uh, subject property is improved with a surface parking lot today, is that right?
That is correct, yes.
And you're proposing to renovate the lot and offer parking services to the general public as a non-accessory parking facility, is that right?
Yes.
And you believe there's a need and demand for remote parking in the subject area, given that the subject property is located immediately across the street from Midway Airport, is that right?
Yeah, yes, that is correct.
And in addition to properly striping all of the parking spaces and installing code-compliant landscaping elements as well as perimeter fencing, uh, you're also proposing a three-hundred-and-ninety-one square foot uh, building, or what we're calling a building shelter, uh, as part of the program, is that right?
Correct, yes.
And that building will contain an office and give your customers a place to wait for shuttle services uh, that'll take them to and from the uh, airport, is that right?
Yes.
So uh, the parking in your customers, uh, as well as your employees, will all be uh, uh, organized and contained onsite, is that right?
Correct, yes.
And, and inside a physical building structure, not walking around the lot, correct?
Yes.
Now, in terms of operations, the parking lot will operate twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week?
Correct, yes.
Given typical travel patterns, you expect the lot to be most active between six AM and about ten PM, is that right?
Yes.
And your uh, plan is to have shuttles that'll be coming to the property uh, anywhere between two and three times an hour during that uh, busier timeframe, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, but because there's less uh, airport activity or airport travel overnight, um, you expect the shuttle service to come once or twice every few hours, or even on-demand when needed uh, until the morning hours uh, resume, is that right?
That is correct, yes.
And no matter what time of day, there will always be at least one employee present onsite, is that correct?
Yes.
And your employees will actually have several roles um, a, at the property, including processing payment, monitoring the shuttle services, uh, and having a security presence for the lot, is that true?
Yes, it's true.
And Jack, excuse me, is it your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes, it would be.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I can call, Bill Kokalios is my second witness.
Yep, Bill, if you're on, please just state your name and address.
Hi, uh, good morning, everybody, uh, my name is Bill Kokalios with Axios Architects, one eighty North Wells, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six oh six.
Thank you, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
And Bill, again, you are a licensed architect in the state of Illinois?
Yes.
You've testified in that capacity many times before this board, is that right?
That's correct.
And you designed the site improvements for the, for the proposed non-accessory parking lot at the subject property?
Yes, I did.
Focusing more on the highlights, your plan calls for reorganizing and striping sixty code-compliant surface parking spaces?
That's correct.
And that's required not only to comply with the ordinance, but also uh, frankly, because the lot is a bit worn down in its current condition today, is that right?
That's right.
You're also proposing to close one of the two existing curb cuts from South Central that serves the uh, subject property, is that right?
That's correct, yes.
And that change is being offered uh, as a way to better control the vehicle traffic coming to and from the lot on a daily basis?
That is correct, yes.
You'll, you'll also be incorporating code-compliant landscaping, again, new perimeter fencing, and improved exterior lighting for the site, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct, basically, right now, there is zero landscaping on the site. We're providing uh, twenty-eight uh, trees total, about a hundred and fifty-six shrubs. Uh, we're removing the chain link fence, we're putting wrought iron fence in front, a wrought iron fence to the south, uh, up to the existing uh, building to the neighbor. Uh, we're also putting a wood fence in the back, uh, except around the corner, uh, where we have wrought iron fence uh, proposed on the, on the north uh, west corner, and then along the twenty-foot alley going uh, east, uh, going uh, east-west, we're also gonna provide a wood fence there for screening there, we're providing interior downlighting for the parking lot. Uh, we have uh, put islands, we've landscaped the entire perimeter of the site.
Okay, and uh, as we discussed uh, with the applicant, you also designed the one-story office administration building uh, for both employee and customer use, is that right?
That's correct.
So again, people will have a designated place to go and wait for their shuttle and not be forced to stand out uh, and wait uh, just out in the open at the lot.
That is correct.
Uh, Bill, in your professional opinion, uh, will the proposed parking lot design work in a safe and efficient manner?
Yes, it will.
And will it comply with the landscape requirements imposed by the code?
Yes.
Uh, is it also your understanding that my office filed a witness statement on your behalf in this case?
Yes, I do.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes.
Thank you, um, Mr. Chairman, my third witness is Mr. Terrence O'Brien.
Hey, um, Terrence, uh, if you could state your name and address.
Uh, Terrence O'Brien, maintained offices at seventy-three eighty-three North Lincoln Avenue, Lincolnwood, Illinois.
Thank you, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do, yes.
Thank you, and we recognize your expertise based off of many past appearances.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, um, again, Terry, in, in this case, or your assignment in this case was to determine whether the requested special use would comply with the general criteria for special uses as set forth in the code, is that right?
That is correct, I would also like to make a note that, at the time I prepared my report, there was going to be sixty-four parking spaces, but you've explained that's been reduced to sixty, therefore, I would amend my report accordingly, saying sixty rather than the sixty-four originally planned.
Thank you, Terry, um, you physically inspected the subject property in the surrounding area?
On several occasions, yes, sir.
Can you please give the board just a brief description of the existing uh, conditions in the immediate area?
Well, the prime, primary and predominant land use in the area is the uh, Midway Airport, which is basically bounded by Cicerone Avenue on the east, Central Avenue on the west, sixty-third Street on the south, fifty-fifth Street on the north. However, I would note that in the surrounding areas along Fifty-Fifth Street, portions of uh, Cicerone Avenue, portions of uh, sixty-third Street, there are numerous related facilities that really operate in conjunction with the Midway Airport, including various parking lots, parking structures that are multi-story in height. Other uses in the land in the surrounding area are commercial and business in nature. There's also some light manufacturing in the surrounding area, and more specifically along some of the properties on Central Avenue, which are zoned for manufacturing purposes. And once you remove yourself from these primary thoroughfares of Cicerone, Fifty-Fifth, Sixty-third, and Central Avenue, the primary land use would be residential in nature, single-family, multifamily, their stories are anywhere from one to three stories in height, and their age is anywhere from approximately relatively new in a few instances to approximately sixty years old.
And Terry, based on your inspection of the immediate area, is it your professional opinion that the proposed special use is consistent and compatible with the surrounding land uses?
Yes, so my professional opinion, it definitely is, I would point out that I'm aware of at least six other parking facilities along the streets I just mentioned that are utilized in conjunction with uh, Midway Airport, I'd also point out that along uh, sixty-third Street, there's another lot that is utilized in conjunction for storage of automobiles for a Buick uh, dealership.
And Terry, based on those existing or surrounding sand, land uses, um, do you believe the requested special use meets the approval criteria uh, defined by the ordinance?
In my professional opinion, it most, it most definitely does. I've addressed the various criteria set forth in my report, and I would also point out, I think it's important to emphasize the fact, the subject property is zoned M-one-one, which is a manufacturing-type district, and it allows a substantial number of uses that in my opinion are equally or more intense than that proposed by the applicant, and they would include such things as vehicle storage and towing facilities, warehousing, uh, more vehicle repair shops, freight movement-type facilities, wireless communications, et cetera.
Terry, just for the record, um, if the uh, zoning board were to approve the special use, would the special use application otherwise comply with the applicable standards of the ordinance?
Yes.
Uh, do you believe that the special use would serve a public convenience and that it will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood?
In my professional opinion, the proposed use would have no adverse impact upon surrounding uh, neighborhood in terms of uh, type of life and then also the value of properties, I think it's compatible and harmonious with other land uses in the area.
Do you believe the site design and operating characteristics are compatible with those of the neighboring uses along South uh, Central Avenue?
Yes, I do.
And lastly, in your professional opinion, do you believe the proposed site plan uh, with the single point of ingress and egress was designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort?
Yes, actually, it amounts to an elimination of one existing curb cuts, and there is not really a substantial amount of pedestrian traffic along Central Avenue in this specific location, so I don't think there'll be any adverse impact on pedestrian traffic.
Uh, Terry, again, you did prepare a written report summarizing your findings and conclusions in this case?
Yes, sir, I did.
And it's your understanding that my office filed a copy of that report with the zoning board, correct?
That's correct, yes, sir.
And if you were to continue to testify this morning, your testimony would be consistent with the statements uh, and conclusions contained in that report?
That's correct, yes.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, that uh, concludes the applicant's case in chief. Uh, we'd be happy to answer any questions you or the board members have about the proposal.
Thank you, Counselor, um, one question for the applicant, Mr. Salea, um, how long have you owned this property?
Sorry, I was unmuted, I, I have owned this property about a year and a half now.
Okay. Okay, great, other questions from the board before we go to the objector? Okay, a few questions actually that, on the mind, that I think should be, we, we should take now to get them out before we go to the objection side of the thing, Mr. Salea, can you tell us a little bit about your experience, um, uh, if, if there is experience operating and running um, a parking lot? And also just that, a little bit about the history of this lot, such as whether you terminated the old Lessee, things like that?
Yeah, as far as the uh, old ownership of that is concerned, I have bought this lot from uh, Monarch Air Services with the notion that it was always a parking lot, now, as far as uh, my experience, my experience is concerned, I, I know of a lot of licensees that would actually take over that location. Uh, I personally do not have the operation expertise in terms of running the lot per se, but I do have the expertise in terms of developing that project. Uh, I've got a number of other projects that I do have here in Illinois, and uh, and this- and, and this is one, this is one of them that I would like to do as well. I feel there's a need for having additional parking spaces or having additional shuttle services that's going to and from the airport.
Okay, and this is, this lot has been operating for a while, correct? And if so, did you terminate the old less C or what caused the turnover?
Can you repeat the question again, please?
Yeah, first off, am I correct that this lot has been operating as a lot in that practice for quite a while? And if I am correct on that, can you let me know how the old relationship with the less C, the old less C ended? Did you terminate the relationship with the old less C?
No.
Go ahead.
Yeah, no, I did not. When I actually purchased the property, there was a lease in place with the old less, less C. Less C, I think, was, I believe was another car care center of some sort, and that lease did expire, and when, 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 when the lease did expire, they decided that they, that they had no, that they no longer had use for the actual lot. Right before I actually bought the lot, I did talk to Nick Fatikas in regards to, talking to Nick Fatikas in regards to turning that lot into a shuttle type of service to and from the airport.
Okay.
Chairman, I have a question. Chairman, how long have you owned the lot?
It's been a year and a half now.
A year and a half, okay. And when did the lease C, lease expire?
I don't have the information from the top of my head. I can look it up for you.
Could you please do that? Because it would be hard for me to vote if I don't have these answers to these questions, because you've owned a lot for a year and a half. You're not sure when the lease C, you know, lease expired. So, I mean, you already own it, so for the last year and a half, the buck has stopped with you. And I just want to know how long the lease C has been gone, so that would be helpful.
I'm pulling it up right now.
Great.
Just give me a few minutes, okay?
Sure.
If you don't mind. That lease expired back on... Okay. December of two thousand and twenty.
Okay, so.
So one year ago.
Twelve months. You've owned the property for eighteen months, as you stated, and the lease expired twelve months ago. Okay, so you've been basically overseeing this lot for the last twelve months then?
Correct, that's correct.
Okay, perfect. All right, I look to, I look forward to hearing what the opposition has to say. Thank you.
Mr. Saleh, just to kind of go with that, the, the chain of questioning, do you have someone lined up who will operate this lot already?
I don't have one specifically in mind, but I can definitely get a couple of licensees. I do have brokers in the industry that would actually help me through that process, but as of today's date, I don't have anyone specific that would actually take over the lot, because we have no idea what's going to happen during the approval process of this call.
Got it. So you would use a broker and assumably there's some standard of operation there to make sure that they're a good operator?
That's correct.
Okay, any other questions?
Chairman.
Yep.
I'm sorry, if I could just add that one of the other issues, operational issues that we've discussed with the applicant is that, again, the shuttle service is typically through a third-party provider, and I wanted to make sure the board was aware of that. Those are all licensed and insured shuttle services. So that's something that, again, is, we, we can't get to that point without having the entitlement to develop the property, but that's also part of the operations that we've discussed with the Department of Planning and Development, and I wanted to make sure you and the board members were aware that, again, there are licenses and insurance requirements specific to shuttle services between our lot and the airport.
Great, thanks, Counselor. That's helpful. Any other questions from the board before we turn over to the objector?
I've got a question. This is Commissioner Sanchez. This is for the applicant. Do you have a plan for security for the parking lot?
I, I don't have a plan in place. As of today's date, I don't have one in place, no.
And if you, if you have a licensee that's operating this lot and you start getting complaints from the neighbors or the aldermen or, or anyone else who's, who's got a something, something's not going right with this lot, what would you do in that situation?
I, I mean, I have, I, I, I will be fully responsible for any kind of complaint that will come through in regards to the licensee, whether things are not going well, whether there's noises or whether there's too much traffic, or whatever the case may be. I, I have no idea. I can't anticipate or foresee what's gonna, what, what, what could potentially go wrong in this lot. I'm assuming we're going to go ahead and vet the individual, vet him really, and make sure that he's a that, 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 that this individual license has not had any issues in the past. So as far as a vetting process, we're definitely going to vet him. We're not going to just put anybody in there just for the sake of having cars being filled up and having an inexperienced licensee.
And will you, will you give yourself the right to, to terminate the license if the licensee is, is doing something that's in violation of the law or, you know, you're getting too many complaints?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Esposito, just a continuation of that question. Have you been receiving complaints during the time you've owned the property or have the police been called to the property during the time you've owned it?
I have not received a single complaint about anything. The, the parking lot is empty. It's been empty the last year or so, so, and since I've owned it last year and a half, I haven't received any complaints from anyone.
And there are no cars currently parked there. Is that correct?
That is, that is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions from the board? Okay, let's go to the objector. Who is Alderman Quinn on this one? So first, Alderman, to get us started, can you please just state your name and also who you are, and I'll swear you in?
Sure, Marty Quinn, Alderman, Thirteenth Ward.
Thank you. And Alderman Quinn, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you, sir. So what brings you here today?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. I'm testifying today on behalf of the residents of the fifty-nine-hundred-and-six-thousand block of South Parkside against the application for a special use to establish a non-accessory parking lot with sixty parking spaces. I provided to the committee three exhibits for the record. I've provided, number one, photos of damaged cars that were stored at this lot. Number two, copies of violations issued by Streets and Sanitation. Number three, a petition against the proposal that I personally circulated, signed by the residents of the fifty-nine-hundred-and-six-thousand block of Parkside. As demonstrated by the photos, the violations, and the petitions, the current owner of fifty-nine-fourteen South Central, J.R.A. Holdings LLC has no regard for the residents of Parkside Avenue. J.R.A. Holdings literally converted a parcel of land that shares an alley with single-family homes into a junkyard. I will not sit idle and let a business make a quick buck at the expense of the residents in my neighborhood. Further, considering this address is directly across the street from Midway Airport, I would argue the junkyard, J.R.A. Holdings, was operating, had an adverse impact on the perception of the city of Chicago. On behalf of the residents of South Parkside Avenue, I ask that this committee side with the Chicago residents and oppose this application for special use. There are two witnesses that had to get off or could not make. I humbly ask that their testimony also be accepted for this record. Is that possible, Mr. Chair?
Is it witnesses that we have written testimony from?
Yeah, there's two, there's, they, they tried to get, I think Mary tried to get on but had to leave at eleven, and she's, she's given me written testimony, and then there's an owner of a business right next door at fifty-nine thirty-two that would also like to have his voice heard.
So we, if it's not on, if they're not here and it's not previously in our record, I think the best route is for you to just explain what their testimony is, and since you're, since you're sworn, you can do an explanation of that.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Mary Oswald Karz, who resides on the fifty-nine-hundred block of South Parkside in the Clearing Neighborhood, speaks on behalf of the entire block that the vehicles that were involved were filled with garbage that began to contribute to an influx of rodents in the area that were using the vehicles as harborage and eating junk inside. The, the condition of the lot was also an issue. The vehicles were not being parked in traditional parking spaces. The entire lot from the east to the west end and from the north and the south was filled with crashed cars. She's also asking that this special use not be granted because the, the owners of the property have no respect for the neighbors. The parking, the crashed cars were unsightly. There's a, an increase in rodent activity. This, Mary would go on to say that this business has a adverse impact on her property value and discouraging prospective families from wanting to purchase on her block. Mary lives at fifty-nine twenty-nine South Parkside.
Thanks, Alderman. On the points on, on, on garbage and kind of the disrepair of the lot, have you, have you personally witnessed that?
I, I have. It was brought to my attention by the Streets and Sanitation Commissioner, Moian Zedan. He had sent me, he had taken photos of, of the, of the cars in question, and then had issued the citations accordingly, which I, which I have here, yeah.
Okay, great. And, and just for, just for the, the written record, we have, we have statements that there are citations. We do not have physical copies of citations.
Happy to, happy to provide those to you.
I think for now, because it's a little, it's a little too late on the, on that evidence, the best we can do is have you describe them.
Sure.
And could you please describe the dates as well? Thank you.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman. This is the court reporter. Could you have him spell Mary's last name?
Sure. O.W.C.A.R.Z. I'm looking at the date of notice for the address of fifty-nine, for, fifty-nine fourteen South Central, one twenty-six twenty-one, improper disposal of motor vehicles, vehicle parts, parts of motor vehicles repair shop, vehicle building structure receptacle lot at fifty-nine twenty South Central, failure to maintain open lot free of garbage, refuse trash or manure, nuisance, refuse, waste, abandoned vehicle or car at, at business, dangerous detrimental to health existing in connection to business. These, the inspections took place on July ninth, two thousand and twenty.
Okay, so one of the first citations you read was, was January twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-one, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Chairman, this is Nick Fatikas.
Can I, sorry, this is Julie Saul. Can I just ask a clarifying question for the alderman? You said the, the citation was January two thousand and twenty-one, but was the inspection for that citation in July of two thousand and twenty? Or is that a separate incident?
The date of notice was one twenty-six twenty-one. The inspection date on this particular one was July of two thousand and twenty.
Thank you. And then I guess if, Nick, if your applicant can clarify the date he acquired the property that they were for.
Right, and I, so two points, and I think, actually, Commissioner Saul, the, in the inspection date that the, and again, I want to make it clear for the record that I, I was not provided with copies of any of the photos, violations, or the petition that was submitted. So we're kind of reacting to new information. My client testified under oath during his case in chief that he has not received a violation from the city. The violation date that the alderman cited was from July of two thousand and twenty. The violation notice date came in twenty, in, on January twenty-sixth of twenty-one, so what is that, five, about five, a little bit over five months later. We're not aware of any violation. We haven't received a copy of the violation. I'd also point out that the prior lease expired at about that time, maybe within a few weeks of that time. Jack, the applicant, also testified under oath that since the beginning of two thousand and twenty-one, the lot has remained vacant. So while there may have been bad acts under prior ownership or even under the prior leaseholder who is using the property that Jack purchased the property subject to, during the time after the expiration of that lease, the lot has remained vacant and not used. And that's part of, not only, again, our, our case today, but part of the testimony provided by the applicant directly.
This is Commissioner Saul. Again, Nick, can you or your client state the month and year they acquired the property?
Jack, can you, can you respond to the commissioner's question, please?
Yeah, let me pull up the hot stick here. The property was purchased September twenty-fifth of two thousand and twenty.
Since September?
September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty was the closing date on that property.
Okay, so it was September twenty-fifth, because I had on my notes, you said December two thousand and twenty. You said eighteen months.
No, no, that's when the lease expired, Chairman Toya. The lease expired in December. The purchase of the property occurred in September. The violation that the alderman had referenced came in September, came in July prior to my client's ownership of the property.
Got it, got it. Yeah, just trying to make sure I have the timeline right. Okay, so July two thousand and twenty was the complaint. September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty is when your client took over the property. December two thousand and twenty is when the lease C, lease ran out. Yes? Do I got that right?
I, yes, that's the timeline that I know, yes.
Okay, just to make sure. All right, thank you.
Yeah, and that's, and that's helpful, because to go back to the objector on this, you know, we're trying to frame that whether or not it's improved, you know, when this applicant, J.R.A. Holdings, has owned the property. So I, to ask you a pretty direct question, Alderman, as part of you and your objection, do you believe that this applicant, it's not reasonable that this applicant will improve the way that this lot has been operated in the past?
I have no idea. I don't know the I don't know the applicant.
Okay.
Um, he he stated on the record that he's been the owner of the property for. Over a year now, hasn't made time to come see me, share a vision on what his intentions are. Um, so that raises a red flag for me.
Yep.
Um, and so moving forward, I would like to share with you what the the neighboring business has to say about. This proposal.
Okay, Alderman, quick question, this is Sam Toya again. I want to go to the counselor, Nick. Uh, Nick, you did not reach out to the Alderman to set up the meeting? I mean, historically, you're very good at having your clients meet with the Alderman and the neighborhood groups and the business groups. If, you know, I've been doing this for eleven years now, and I know that most of your clients you bring to the Alderman, business groups and neighborhood groups.
Right, so I could speak directly to that. Uh, when this case first started, uh, when it came to my office in early twenty-one. We actually did have and and we had a conversation with the Alderman about some of the concerns and how neighbors. Residential neighbors may have concerns about the operations. We were very early in our planning process. Again, I have a ton of respect for Alderman Quinn. I I I don't know if he remembers uh that particular phone call. What we did then, uh, after we developed our plan for the program. Uh, when we filed our application, we sent notice uh to the Alderman's office, again, alerting him to uh the the application that was filed. Um, we have not, this is the first time uh that the case has been called to hearing. There was no other uh correspondence between our office and the Alderman. Other than knowing that residents to immediately to the uh west of the property had general concerns about the the lot.
And this is, you know.
Go ahead, Eric.
Yep. Can you currently describe, is there a fence around this lot right now? And can you just?
Almost think of it more like a, not a s- a construction fence, but there is fencing. Enclosing the perimeter of the uh the lot, what chain link. It's not not wrought iron, it's not um, there you go.
Thank you.
Exactly.
Okay, I just want to make sure I have the same lot in mind. Thank you.
And Mr. Saleh, um, to to go back on this frame of of questioning. In the time when you've owned the lot, what kind of improvements or cleanup have you undertaken?
I think the only cleanup that we actually did is when uh the tenants moved out of the area, uh, moved out of the the lot, parking lot. We went in there and just swept the whole entire area, cleaned everything up. If you actually drive by it now today, the property is and it looks like just an empty parking lot is what it looks like. There's no trash, there isn't any debris roaming around. It just looks like your normal typical sixty-three parking spaces is what it looks like now.
Again, this is Commissioner Esposito. Obviously, there's concern that cars will be essentially dumped at this parking lot at some period of time in the future and neglected. Um, how would you go about preventing that from happening so that it doesn't turn into a dumping ground for cars that are no longer in use?
So i- if I could speak to that, Chairman, again, something that we, I'm sorry, Commissioner, something we spoke to D P D about in terms of operations. I I'm I'm betting that many of the people that are on the call today have traveled uh and remotely parked, right? So you park, you you use a credit card, you pay for the time that you're at the property. Our program for this site has one staff person on site to process that payment. To be able to keep an eye on all of the cars that are parked, whether or not they're leaving, what the anticipated um stay is. Some people travel for the weekend, some people travel by day. I mean, it 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 varies. Um, frankly, from a business perspective, this property and this non-accessory lot that would be used for remote parking. Could not make money, could not be profitable if it became a junkyard. On top of that, Jack, approximately how much money are you investing in the property? To bring it up to delivery standpoint where the parking spaces are striped, the landscaping elements and the lighting elements. And fencing elements are incorporated into the site.
We should probably be talking in the upwards between seven hundred and fifty thousand to about a million dollars.
Right, so Commissioner, to the point, the the applicant, in order to obtain permits and obtain the licenses required to operate the facility. Is making, we'll call it a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment in site improvements. It, people don't invest seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to run a junkyard or a a vehicle depository. It, that's just not the program being presented to the board today. That's not what the applicant has envisioned for the property.
Thank you.
And a question, pretty general question for the applicant. Um, I, there's probably even previous to this, but now um there's clearly an understanding that in the past. This lot has not been operated well. Um, so with that knowledge, I just want to ask the applicant about um. What kind of process, how they can make, should this get granted? What, how they could improve the process of vetting operators coming in? Um, more so than it just being arm's length with a broker. Getting the best price.
I I mean, I don't know what happened in the past, whether there were junk cars being parked there. I mean, I really had no idea what went on uh the past, say, you know, three, four, five years. I have had no idea. I just more or less saw an opportunity now, as far as vetting the actual applicants. Uh, gotta do my due diligence, of course, I gotta visit their side, make sure they're on the operate, they're 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 running the the place uh uh. From an operation standpoint, in 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 a clean fashion, and everything is up to par. I mean, I've got a bunch of uh shopping centers and office buildings and I'm a maintenance freak. Uh, I typically visit all the the spit malls and everything else with it. I'm sure that everything is done uh right. Uh, so I'm extremely anal when it comes to cleanliness and ensuring that everything's everything is done the right way. Um, only time will tell, okay, the only thing I can tell you is I will definitely vet the applicant to make sure that the existing operation. That they currently have the existence is spot on. As long as they're running a class A operation, I'm all in. I I don't want to have any issues with the Alderman, I don't want to have any issues with the neighbors. I want to run a clean business uh there by the airport, that's what I want to do.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Toya again. I'm just confused why you haven't reached out to the Alderman. Um, you know, since you've owned a property, let me look my notes again, since September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty. And the Alderman is going on record saying there's been no communication. So, and you're telling me you're a, you know, you're you're a neat freak and you're on top of everything. But, you know, it seems like you own this property for, like you said, eighteen months. And there's been no communication with the local Alderman or the business groups or the neighborhood groups, as far as I know. Uh, so I'm a little confused, I hear what you're stating, but I don't see. I don't see uh, I don't, I don't see the consistency of you reaching out, like you say.
Sir, sir, I I have no, I had no idea that I had to reach out to the Alderman. Uh, I I really had no idea of seeing uh my attorneys to get the special use permit done on my behalf. If I wasn't made aware that I need to reach out to, I would have done so.
But you said you own, you said you own property throughout the city, maybe I missed.
Not Chicago, I'm.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, they're all in K County, the Page County, when the Baglo County, uh, Lake County.
You still nothing in Cook County or the city of Chicago? This is your first project?
Correct, that is correct.
Ah, well, we're, we're kind of a big city, small town, so I'm used to people reaching out. And like I said, I know your counselor knows that, so I'm just a little confused why there's been no communication. I always say communication is the key to success, but I just don't see a lot of communication from you and your team with the Alderman and the neighborhood. That's, that's what I'm seeing right now or hearing, and you know, so.
And certainly. The only thing that I again can add to that is I I I did have a phone call before we even started the application process. With the Alderman's office, I spoke with the Alderman. It was a very cordial conversation. He alerted me to concerns with the residents. And there was initial outreach. We also, again, for the record, sent our required notice of filing to the Alderman's office. We were made aware of the Alderman's objection by staff um about a a week or so ago. We were not aware of any exhibits that were provided. Um, but to say that there was no outreach or no communication, I I I don't, that's not, that's not accurate. If, I I don't know how else to say, we did reach out, there was, there was contact made, concerns were raised. And we proceeded knowing that those concerns needed to be addressed.
Sure, Nick, I understand that, but I just know you and your team really reach out. I mean, I know, I I I've watched you and your team work throughout the years, throughout the fifty wards, because you've probably done a project in every ward. And I, I mean, you just reach usually really deep. I'm just a little stunned that you and your team didn't reach as deep as you usually do when you're in forty-four, forty-seven, or forty-six, or thirty-two. I mean, I see you reach deep into those wards, so I'm just wondering why you and your team did not reach deep into the thirteenth ward. Just, I'm just complexed and, you know, history repeats itself. And usually historically, like I said, when you're out there on the north side or the near or the northwest side, near northwest side, you reach deep. So I'm just wondering why you didn't reach so deep into the southwest side. I just don't get it, I I, because I know you reach deeper to the north side. When you, you and your clients.
Hundred percent, and I think with with all due respect to everybody on the call today, we we weren't in a position to step on the Alderman's toes. And overreach his position that there were concerns.
I'm talking business groups, I'm talking neighborhood groups. We can put the Alderman on the side, because I know it's a very, you know what I mean? The southwest side is 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 got as many community people involved as they do on the north side. Like when you're in Lakeview and Lincoln Park and, you know, Roscoe Village, I see you reach deep. I just don't know why you ain't reaching as deep in the Clearing Neighborhood as you do in the Roscoe Village or in the Lakeview community. I just.
Commissioner Esposito, I I I have a question. Um, and I guess this is for the Alderman himself. We're looking at a photograph right here that doesn't necessarily depict the conditions described in that complaint. Do you find this photograph an actual, an an actual record of how the property looks at this time?
It looks pretty similar to um what I've seen. Um, I've also seen um. The lot with the damaged cars as well.
But are you, have the cars in fact been removed to your set?
Yeah, I think this is, I think this is, this is a, this is a good image of what is recent.
Okay, great.
I think that's fair, yeah. Um, if I may, um, for the record, this is the first time I'm hearing any business uh that involves shuttles. Uh, this is the first I'm hearing about that. So I wa- I uh. Issue aside on the special use, this is the first I'm hearing of any sort of proposal that involves shuttles. Which is a whole nother issue involving my neighborhood.
And Alderman, just a, just a few questions, just uh depending on what we, what route we go, what's, what's the alternative here for this plan in your eyes?
Yeah, I I, thanks, Tim, and that's a really good question. Um, I'm looking to get away from parking. Um, I have spent uh the last ten years developing Cicero Avenue uh away from the car i- industry, whether it's selling cars, parking cars. Um, to getting into more of the restaurant industry. So I view Cicero or Central, I should say, as as an opportunity to develop more of a uh, more of a a restaurant uh area. We just built a selective enrollment high school uh about half a mile from this area off of Central Avenue. Uh, I think traffic is picking up more from I fifty-five. Um, so I think this, this could be a a use that could involve a restaurant or something along those lines. Um, so that would be my preference um uh to to uh the uh testimony of of um. Of Terry earlier, he's exactly right, there is, there's an abundance of parking uh in and around Midway Airport. I don't think we need anymore. Uh, and frankly, my my neighborhood is is in in the residents are looking for more uh opportunities for uh restaurants and those sorts of things. That are going to actually provide jobs for the community. So that, that's my vision.
Okay, thank you. Um. Alderman, any other, any other questions you have for the applicant before we move to rebuttal or anything else you'd like to say?
No.
Okay, um, before we move to rebuttal, Commissioner, was any, any additional questions for the Alderman? Okay, great. Um, so with that, Counselor, I know we've got a lot of information here, but this is your time to do a rebuttal. And then uh pending any additional questions from the board, closing out.
You, Chairman, again, um, I'm going to try and keep this as short as I can. The property has been used for parking since at least nineteen eighty-six. The photos that are being presented right now on the screen show damaged cars that restored at the property. Prior to my client's ownership, subject to a lease that expired at the very beginning of my client's ownership. And for the last, call it twelve months, the property has been cleaned, it's been fenced, and it's an improvement on the existing condition.
And then, Nick, I just want to note that these photos, because now that they're getting pulled up, these are the photos that the Alderman sent for the transcript, just so we know where they're coming from.
And is there a date that corresponds to the photos? Because I don't have any of these photos and I don't have any dates to rely on.
Uh, Alderman, are you aware of a date of the photos?
I'm sorry, I don't, I could get those from sanitation. They're they're within a year.
Would these photos have been taken during the inspection in July of twenty twenty?
I'd have to double check with the sanitation supervisor.
Nick, you can keep going.
The applicant is proposing to make a substantial investment in the property to bring it up to code, to ensure. Uh, fencing, screening, landscaping elements are uh incorporated on the site. It's again, a property that is zoned manufacturing. That has been improved with the parking lot since at least nineteen eighty-six. That's located across the street from Midway Airport. We'd ask the board to uh recognize that the special use standards have been met. And we asked for approval of the use as a non-accessory parking lot for sixty parking spaces. Thank you.
All right, thanks for that, Nick, and and I'm treating that as your close. I want to give the board just one additional opportunity to ask any questions if there's any information gaps in your eyes. Okay, um, we will take this under consideration and thanks very much, everyone, for your time and information.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, thank you. Um, and Counselor Fatikas, I know you're up next. We have, um, we're going to change the schedule for medical reason. So um, we're going to go now, quick, to um what I actually think will be a quick special use. It's five thirteen dash twenty-one dash S, and again, this is uh to accommodate a medical reason. So while they are getting settled, I want to first state, if anyone is present to object on calendar number five thirteen dash twenty-one dash S, please raise your hand, we'll get you promoted. And I'm going to go ahead and read the department's recommendation. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of of the proposed hair salon. Okay, um, with that, uh, Counselor Barnes, uh, you can go ahead. I think you're on mute, or you're not on mute.
Oh, I'm not, thank you, I'm sorry, I had to having technical difficulties. Um, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and esteemed members of the board. For the record, my name is Sarah Barnes and I'm an attorney with the losses of Sam Banks. Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for accommodating us today. Um, I really do appreciate it. With that, I am happy to be here this afternoon on behalf of the applicant Ignacio Ayala. Um, here also with us today, we do have our cert- M A I certified land appraiser, um, Joseph Ryan, who was able to join us. So if it pleases you, Mr. Chairman, for efficiency and time, would you like to swear in my witnesses?
Yes, for sure, okay, Mr. Ayala, will you please state your name and address? Let's see. Hey, you've got to unmute yourself, um, I see you promoted, that's good.
Ignacio, you're muted. Ignacio, you're muted.
Better. Hi, my name is Ignacio Davila Ayala, sixteen twenty-nine West Sherwin Avenue, Unit two oh five, Chicago Illinois six oh six two six.
Thank you, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, and then Joe Ryan, who I believe it's your first of the day, Joe. So if you could.
It is.
Joseph M. Ryan, MAI President, LaSalle Appraisal Group with offices at ninety-four fifty-five South Horn Avenue in Chicago.
Thank you, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great, and we recognize your expertise, many.
Thank you.
Great, go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The subject property comprises the northwest corner of Granville Avenue and Broadway Avenue. It is currently improved with a three-story mixed-use building that wraps around on both, has frontages on both Granville and Broadway. There are a total of six storefronts along Broadway and a single storefront on the first floor on Granville. The applicant, Mr. Ayala, is, has executed a lease for the existing one storefront on Granville Avenue, which is comprised of approximately eight hundred and sixty-six square feet of space. With that, Mr. Ayala is interested in seeking to establish a hair salon, a small boutique hair salon within that space, and we are here speaking, seeking a special use to allow for such establishment because the subject property is within one thousand linear feet of another, of another hair salon. On that hair salon, though, which is located to the east of the subject property, approximately two blocks, provides completely different services than that which will be provided by Mr. Ayala. So with that, I will put on Mr. Ayala for some testimony, please. Mr. Ayala, may you please once more just state your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Ignacio Davila Ayala.
Thank you, and Ayala, you are certified and licensed hairstylist in the state of Illinois, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you actually have over twenty years of experience in that industry, is that true?
That's correct.
And within those twenty years, you've owned and operated and managed a couple other salons, is that also correct?
That's correct.
But those salons were located just outside the city in the suburbs, is that true?
That's true.
And you actually live in the city of Chicago, is that correct?
That's correct.
And in, within the neighborhood wherein you're seeking to establish this new salon, is that right?
That's right.
Okay, and you want to move into your salon into the city so you can better service your existing clients, is that also correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. And with that, is it your intention to employ three other stylists at this salon?
That's correct.
Okay, and, and all of those stylists will also be licensed and certified, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you intend to operate Monday, excuse me, Tuesdays through Friday from ten AM to seven PM, is that right?
That is right.
And then on Saturdays from eight AM to four PM, is that true?
That's correct.
And then you will not be open on Sundays and Mondays, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. And then just lastly, Mr. Ayala, since I know you're even currently operating a salon in the suburbs, will you be complying with and adhering to all of the ongoing COVID protocols for the health and safety of your employees as well as your patrons?
Yes, definitely, we will.
And just lastly, Mr. Ayala, you were provided with an affidavit prior to these proceedings. If you were to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with the statements that were made in that document?
Yes, it will.
Thank you. And for the record, Mr. or Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we did also, Mr. Ayala and I did also reach out to Alderman Osterman as well as the Edgewater Chamber of Commerce, and both Alderman Osterman and the Chamber of Commerce are really excited to have Mr. Ayala in the neighborhood, and both have offered letters of support for the special use. Those letters were tendered to ZBA staff on Monday before five o'clock PM, so you should have those in your file. If there's, are there any questions for Mr. Ayala? Otherwise, I can proceed to Mr. Ryan.
No, I just want to say thanks, Counselor. That's what I'm used to your team doing, going to the alderman's office, going to the neighborhood group. So I'm glad to see on this case that you, you touched all bases. Thanks.
Okay, so let's go to, let's go to Joe Ryan, and then we'll circle back with for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Ryan, may you please once more state your name and address for the record?
Joseph Ryan, MAI President, LaSalle Appraisal Group, ninety-four fifty-five South Horn Avenue in Chicago.
Ryan, and you were retained by the applicant to evaluate the subject property and to confirm whether or not the subject use at this property complies with all of the standards and requirements for special uses, is that right?
That's correct.
And did you have an opportunity to evaluate the subject property and the surrounding area?
I did.
And in your evaluation and assessment, is it your professional opinion that a proposed hair salon at the subject property is compliant with all of the standards and criteria for a special use as set forth in the current zoning ordinance?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan, and for the sake of time, you put those, you reduced your opinions into writing and produced a report to the ZBA, is that correct?
I did, and I addressed each of the criteria in the report.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan, and if you were to continue to testify here today, Mr. Ryan, would your testimony and opinions be consistent with what was stated in your report?
Yes, they would be.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I believe you have a copy of Mr. Ryan's report in the file, and with that, I will close out our direct testimony, but we are absolutely happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Counselor. Any questions from the board on this one? Okay, we'll take it under consideration, and I thank everyone for their time.
Thank you very much.
Everyone, have a safe and blessed holiday.
Yep, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Ayala.
Thank you very much.
Bye.
Bye.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for taking that to her. We're going to go now to calendar numbers four ninety-eight dash twenty-one dash the, four ninety-nine dash twenty-one dash, four ninety-nine dash twenty-one dash the, and I believe these are back with Counselor Fatikas, and they're both variations. Okay, and I'm going to make my, my very subsequent statement, that if anyone's here to object for these matters, please just raise your hand, and we'll get you promoted. And with that, Counselor, you can take it away.
Thank you. Again, for the record, Nick Fatikas from the Loftses of Sambanks. I'm here on behalf of the applicants, Dana Westfall and Nicole Van Haverbeek. The applicants own the subject property at nineteen oh nine West Portland. The subject property measures twenty-four feet wide by a hundred and twenty-five feet deep, and it's improved with a three-story, single-family home. The applicants are proposing to permit a rear two-story addition that would add living space for their family to use and enjoy. The, their plans will fully integrate the existing enclosed porch located at the rear of the building into their home. The issue is that the subject zoning lot is twenty-four feet wide, and the existing home is already non-conforming with respect to its west side and combined side setback total. And as you can see from the survey we submitted with our findings of facts, middle, the home favors the west side of the subject zoning lot. And that's actually quite common for the homes on the same side of Cortland Street as our subject property. In order to align the addition so that the existing building walls are, again, match up, the applicant is requesting variations to reduce the west side setback and the combined side setback total. And also, in order to account for the floor area contained in part in the enclosed porch, as well as the proposed addition behind it, the applicants are seeking a companion variation to increase the floor area total by not more than fifteen percent of the existing dimension, from two thousand six hundred and sixty-two square feet to three thousand and ten square feet. We have actually three witnesses available, probably two necessary for the hearing on behalf of the applicants, Mr. Dana Westfall and our project architect Foster Dale. And with that, I'd ask to call my first witness.
Hey, so, Ms. Westfall, can you state your name and address, please?
Sure, this is Dana Westfall.
Ms. Westfall, sorry.
No worries, no worries, happens all the time. My address is nineteen oh nine West Portland Street, Chicago, Illinois.
Thank you, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thanks.
And Dana, again, you and your wife Nicole own the subject property at nineteen oh nine West Portland?
We do.
And as I described in my introduction, the subject lot is improved with a three-story, single-family home, is that right?
Correct.
And it's true that you and your family live at the home, correct?
We do.
And you're now proposing to permit a rear two-story addition, again, at the rear of the home, right?
We are, yes.
And you're doing this to add living space for you and your family to use, correct?
Correct, correct.
In, in order to permit the addition so that it aligns with the existing building walls, you're requesting variations to the west side and combined side setback totals, is that right?
That's correct.
And you're also seeking a variation to increase the allowable floor area total for a building more than fifty years old from two thousand six hundred and sixty-two square feet to three thousand and ten square feet, is that right?
Yes.
And again, that relief accounts for the area containing the existing enclosed porch at the rear of the building, as well as portions of the two-story addition that would be, go behind it, is that right?
It does, yes.
And for the record, though, the enclosed porch is an existing improvement that you inherited when you purchased the property, is that true?
Correct.
So you did not create the existing building or lot conditions that necessitate the relief in today's case, is that right?
That's right.
Dana, is it your understanding that my office filed witness statements on behalf, on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
It would, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, my next witness would be Foster Dale.
Great, yeah, Mr. Dale, can you please state your name and address, and I'll get you sworn in?
Yes, Foster Dale, Foster Dale Architects, thirty-seven seventeen North Ravenswood, Suite one eleven, Chicago, six oh six one three.
Thank you, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Foster, again, you are a licensed architect in the state of Illinois?
Yes.
And you've previously testified in that capacity before this board, is that right?
Yes.
And you designed the proposed rear addition to the single-family home at the subject property?
Yes.
And is it your professional opinion that the substandard with lot dimension, along with the existing non-conforming building footprint, and the existing non-conforming floor area total, again, specifically including the area of the enclosed porch at the rear of the property, create the practical difficulties or particular hardships necessitating variations in this case?
Yes.
But again, the proposed side setback conditions will match identically to what the existing side setback conditions on the lot today, is that right?
That's correct.
And the proposed floor area total of three thousand and ten square feet will not change or alter the character of the existing single-family home, right?
Yes, that's correct.
And again, that's because the area increases at the rear of the property, again, integrating the, the enclosed porch into the proposed addition, is that right?
Yes.
And again, for the record, the proposed floor area total is within fifteen percent of the allowed increase for buildings that are more than fifty years old, correct?
Correct.
Foster, is it your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
If you continued to testify, would your testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes, it would.
Thank you very much, Chairman. That concludes the applicant's case in chief. We'd be happy to answer any questions you or the board members might have about the project.
Great, thanks, Counselor. Any questions from the board? It sounds like we have everything we need on this one from today in the finds of fact, so I want to thank everyone for their time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's go to calendar numbers five hundred dash twenty-one dash S in five hundred and one dash twenty-one dash Z at six oh five North Ashland Avenue. As everyone gets settled, the department's recommendation. And if anyone is here to object on this matter, please raise your hand, and we will get you promoted. Okay, so for calendar number five hundred S twenty-one dash S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish residential use below the second floor for a proposed four-story, four-dwelling unit building with an attached four-car garage, provided that the development is consistent with the design and layout, the plans and drawings dated November twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one, paired by Hannah Architects, Inc. Okay, Counselor, you can take it away.
Okay, thank you. Again, for the record, Nick Fatikas from the Loftses of Sambanks. I'm here this morning on behalf of the applicant Lux Living For You LLC. The applicant has a contract to purchase the subject property at six oh five North Ashland Avenue. The subject property is located at the intersection of North Ashland Avenue and West Ohio Street, and does have a corresponding address of fifteen thirty-two West Ohio. The subject property consists of a single zoning lot measuring thirty-five feet wide by a hundred and twenty-five feet deep, and it's currently improved with a multi-unit residential building. The applicant is proposing to take down the existing building and develop the property with a new four-story building that will contain four residential units and have an attached garage. In order to permit the attached garage configuration, the applicant is seeking variations to reduce the east side setback and the rear setback for floors containing residential units. Additionally, the applicant is seeking a special use to permit residential uses below the building's second floor. Although our property is zoned B-three dash two, it is located at the corner of an entirely residential block, so the block of West Ohio Street, east of the subject property, is entirely residential in nature. And again, our building was designed to match that residential character and complete our block. There will be three witnesses available to testify on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Ivana Karbowski, our project architect, John Hannah, and our MAI appraiser, Mr. Joe Ryan. And with that, sure, I'd ask to call my first witness, Ivana Karbowski.
Hello?
Sorry, I was, yeah, can, Ms. Karbowski, can you please state your name and address?
Yes, this is Ivana Karbowski. My address is seventeen twenty-seven Northwestern Avenue, C-one, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six four seven. Sorry, I'm just, okay.
No, thank you very much, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great.
Ivana, again, you're the managing member of the applicant Lux Living For You LLC, is that right?
Yes.
And that entity has a contract to purchase the subject property at six oh five North Ashland, also known as fifteen thirty-two West Ohio Street, right?
That's correct, yes.
As I described it, you're proposing to develop the property with a new four-story, four-unit residential building?
Yes.
And you're seeking a special use and companion variations to permit that all residential building and the attached garage design, is that right?
Yes.
And provided the zoning board grants the relief, your plan is to sell the units on the open market, is that right?
Yes.
And you've provided the zoning board with the summary of your projected costs, as well as your anticipated return based on current market conditions, is that right?
Yes.
Ivana, is it your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this? Uh, Ivana, is it your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements uh contained in your um? I'm sorry, with, with, contained in your witness statements?
Yes, yes, it would be.
Thank you very much. Um, my next uh witness would be John Hannah.
Hello?
Hey, thank you. Um, John, will you state your name and address, please?
John Hannah, President of Hannah Architects, Inc., one eighty West Washington, Chicago, Illinois, Licensed Architect, State of Illinois.
Thank you, and do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great.
And John, you designed the proposed four-story residential building at the subject property?
That's correct.
And it's your professional opinion that the abutting RS-three zoning district, together with the general pattern of development? Of residential development on this particular block? Create the particular hardships or practical difficulties necessitating variations in this case, is that right?
That's correct.
And additionally, um, unique to this property, there's actually a utility pole in the alley uh that runs along the rear of our property? That restricts access to the proposed garage parking spaces, is that right?
That's correct.
So in order to permit a building with the attached garage and roof deck above it, the applicant is required? To uh reduce the east side setback and the rear setback on the lot, correct?
That's true.
Now, with respect to the east side setback, again, it only applies to the garage's footprint, correct?
That's, that's right.
And that width dimension um is required to provide the geometry needed for the four code-compliant parking spaces, correct?
That's correct.
And your garage design, um, and specifically the two middle spaces, uh, parking spaces? Uh, was directly impacted by the location of the utility pole I just referenced, correct?
It was, yes.
Even so, your design maintains a three-foot setback between the principal building um and the east side property line, correct?
Yes.
And that's for ninety-five feet of the hundred and twenty-five-foot-deep line, right?
That, that's right.
And with respect to the rear setback request, again, it only applies to the uh, uh, first-floor attached garage, right?
That's right.
And that's because the four-story portion of the building, uh, including the first-floor unit? Were designed to maintain a true thirty-foot rear setback from the rear property line, correct?
That's correct.
Uh, but because it's an attached garage and there is a first-floor unit proposed with our building, the rear setback requirement is still imposed.
Yes.
Uh, John, provided the special use and variations are granted, do you believe the resulting building will be consistent and compatible? With the uh surrounding land uses?
Uh, it will.
And it'll effectively complete uh Ohio Street, which is, as I mentioned, entirely residential, correct?
True.
Okay, is it your uh understanding that my office uh filed wit- witness statements on your behalf in this case?
You did.
And if you were to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Uh, it would.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Chairman, my next witness is Mr. Joe Ryan.
Thanks, Counselor, and we have Joe sworn in, and we've also acknowledged his expertise on the record.
Thank you, Chair. And uh, Joe, the scope of your assignment in this case was to evaluate whether the requested special use? Would comply with the general criteria for special uses as set forth in the code, is that right?
That's correct.
You also offered an opinion as to whether the requested variations uh comply with the approval criteria again set forth by the code.
I did, yes.
And part of your evaluation was to physically inspect the subject property in the surrounding area?
Yes.
And you've done that, correct?
I have, yes.
Now, in your inspection of the surrounding area, did you determine whether the re-establishment of a first-floor residential unit? At the subject property would be an appropriate and compatible uh use, given the surrounding land uses?
Yes, it would be.
And um, again, I've said it a, a few times, Ohio Street is almost entirely.
Ohio Street is completely residential, yes.
And, and even, and that actually extends to portions of uh Ashland where new construction is multi-unit residential, is that right?
That's correct.
And Joe, uh, you did prepare a zoning uh report containing your findings and conclusions in this case?
I did.
And it's your understanding that a copy of the report was submitted uh to the zoning board, is that right?
Yes.
Uh, for the record, though, again, you believe that the special use meets all the requisite criteria?
Yes, and all were addressed in my report.
And the same is true of the variation request, is that right?
Yes.
Um. Mr. Chairman, that concludes uh our case in chief. If you or the board members have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them now.
Thanks, I just got a quick question for um, for Joe Ryan. Joe, where is the uh? The closest non-residential? I understand that the street is? Fully residential, but just to get a distance of that would be helpful.
The um. I believe it's across Ashland, west across the Ash. But it's been separated by uh. A grass and tree-lined median.
Okay. Yeah, this is the photo that's helpful, okay. Okay, so it's, it's across the median on Ashland, and it's the? It's the corner of the, the street that technically the address is not on, that is all residential, is that Ohio?
Yes.
Okay.
So Chairman, just to clarify, if you see on, on the uh aerial that's being shown right now? You see the designation in blue, number one?
Yep.
That is essentially the front of the properties on the north side of Ohio Street. From our property, which is the, the hard corner? All the way east, that is an entirely residential block. And directly across the street, all the way east is also uh residential, in fact, it's zoned RM five. Um, so it's multi-unit residential on both sides of the street already, and the existing property today? As I mentioned, is a multi-unit all-residential building with no retail component.
Great. Um, okay, yeah, that's helpful. Um, other questions from the board? Okay, it sounds like none, so we'll, we'll take this under uh consideration, and I appreciate everyone's time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, everybody, I'd like to do one more before we break um for? Some lunch for the commissioners and everyone watching, so if we could fast forward, there's a very long string of continuances? That land us at calendar number five twelve dot dash twenty-one FZ. Um, that's where I'd like to go right now, and I believe this is Counselor Scott Borstein. So let's make sure we have Counselor. Yep, we do. You're just muted. Um, Scott, so let me know.
Yeah.
There we go.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, members of the uh commission. Um, Scott Borstein, on behalf of Neil and Leroy, here on behalf of the Board of Education. Um, this project involves uh the Ekkersall Stadium. Which you can see is on East Eighty-Second Street. Uh, it's a pretty straightforward case, the, the um. The board is just renovating, uh, it's. M- most of the renovations have nothing to do with the variations we're seeking, they're ADA and compliance issues, but? We, we have fencing around the school, uh, around the stadium, and so we are just looking really to? Continue the fencing to match it up with the existing fencing. And of course, you know, right, you can see it there, uh, so it's eight-foot fence, um, and we're gonna? This portion of the fence, I know it's a little hard for you to tell, but it jogs in a little bit into the property. And the rest of the, there you go, you can see the rest of the fence is? Is closer to the property line, so we're just gonna move this one portion of the fence down to match the existing? Um, the existing setback of the fence. And then on the back portion of this, of the stadium, we've got the tennis courts. Um, we're just gonna put typical twelve-foot fencing around the tennis courts. And of course, we're, you can't do fencing that of that height? Uh, along the rear property line, so we need the variation for that as well. Um, so that's, that's what's going on here. I've got uh Evan Smith, uh, who you've had before you many times from the Board of Ed, the Director of Planning. And we're also joined by Elaine Scoff, who's um, uh? Part of the project architect team on the project. And uh, so I, you know, would proceed with our case unless the board has any initial questions.
Yeah, I think we can uh proceed with uh the case and witnesses.
Great, so I, I'll just call Evan first, um, do you wanna swear him in?
Yep, great. Um, yeah, so Evan, will you state your name and address, please? Oh, you're on mute. You're, you're muted, we didn't, I saw.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, you're right, I'm sorry, I was juggling a bunch of things, um, yes. Evan Smith, uh, Director of Planning Design for uh CPS Capital Planning, forty-two West Madison, Chicago, Illinois.
Great, and do you, do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thanks, Evan, so just quickly, again, because we have no objectors here, and I know the board is busy. Um, y- you are familiar with the project, and you're familiar with the affidavit and the findings that we submitted on your behalf in this project?
I'm so sorry, yes, I am.
Great, and i- i- if you were to provide additional testimony today, would that testimony be consistent with? The affidavit and the findings that we submitted?
Yes, it would.
Okay, terrific. Uh, I'll just turn quickly to Elaine now.
Yep, perfect. Um, Elaine, so if you could just state your name and address?
Sure, Elaine Scoff, Project Manager for Forma Architecture, and it is twenty-seven twenty West Cort- Cortez Street, Chicago, Illinois.
Thank you, and do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great. Um, and Elaine, you're, you're familiar with the affidavit and the findings that were submitted in this? Uh, in this project, and you're familiar, obviously, with the project itself?
I am, yes.
Great, and if you were to provide additional testimony today, would it be consistent with? The affidavit and the uh findings materials that we previously submitted?
Yes.
Okay. That really, that concludes our case, uh, and as I say, if the board has any questions, we're here to, to answer them.
Yeah, any questions from the board on this one? Okay, we've got what we need.
Terrific.
The fact, so we appreciate everybody's time, as always.
Right, thank you.
Consideration.
We appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you, and I, I do see, um, uh, we're gonna call a recess for lunch, I just wanna address, um? John Pikarski, I see that your hand is raised, I'm gonna, I'm gonna promote you, and I'm guessing it's because? You will be up shortly after we return, but um? Let me know, and also, Alderwoman, Alderwoman Austin, I see your hand raised as well, you can go ahead and speak right now.
Yes, sir. I was trying to see if I could get my item um seen this morning, because I won't be able to come back for lunchtime.
Okay, so uh, we, that brings us all the way. That brings us pretty far down our list, Alderwoman, are you able to have um a representative? Um, from your, from your office, or? Someone else come on and speak on, on that one, we only move things around for, for medical or religious reasons.
No, the, the individual that could speak on it is uh? Gonna be with me because I have to leave by, by two o'clock.
Okay.
Hmm.
Okay, give me, give me one second. So, and Alderwoman, just to be, be clear, are you objecting on this?
No. I'm supportive.
Okay, so if it works with you, this is not, I just wanna state before, we, it's not our best practice to take? Um, statements on a matter while we're not hearing it, but if it's? Good with you to get your, your support on the record now, would that work, and then we'll reference it when it comes up? We just can't, we're on our agenda.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay, perfect, and just to confirm, so this is for calendar number uh three thirty-six dash twenty-one dash S?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go right ahead.
Uh, in regards to uh the location, one hundred eleventh and State Street? Uh, the um extension of this is to uh increase the floor ratio? So that they can install some uh bathrooms uh on the site itself. Uh, not for any other purposes, it's just for, um, there is no bathroom except for employees only, but it is a service station, and they want to extend? Uh, the service station area, and also to uh be able to place in? Excuse me, uh bathrooms.
Okay, great.
Uh, God, Chairman, this is Commissioner Toya, I, I don't know if you know this, but uh maybe a staff does, is there opposition to uh? Uh, three thirty-six uh dash twenty-one dash S?
Not that I know of.
Sam, not that we know of, but it's, it's worth noting that there could be, because we're.
No, absolutely, I totally understand that, Chairman, I, I was just wondering, sometimes we know there's gonna be opposition, so I was just wondering? Because if there, if we knew there was gonna be oppositions, I might have uh, uh, questions for the older person, uh, that's why I was asking that question.
Uh, that, it's no opposition that I'm aware of, but let me say this, though, uh? Uh, Commissioner, if there is oppositions once that I'm off of it? Uh, I would like what to be held so that I can address those issues before we move forward.
Right, that's why I was asking Ald- Alderman, I just wanted to know if there, if we knew, if you knew there was opposition? Or if the chairman or staff knew there's opposition, then we could try to figure out, but if this is just? You know, a slam dunk, then that's great, but if they, I, you know, Kevin, you here? And if we, there was opposition, then we could ask you uh questions, like I said earlier today, earlier this morning, no one knows their word better than you, so that's why I was asking.
Yes, sir. And, and right, and here, before we blow this out of proportion, it's just, we just don't move the agenda around. Um, unless there's a, a medical or religious thing, so I think it's good, Alderman, thank you so much for stating your support. We wouldn't have been able to take it if it was an objection, but I think it's good just to have it on the record. Um, Nick, your hand is raised.
Yeah. Yeah. If you can hear me, sir, again, um, I'm the attorney for the applicant. We are not aware of any uh opposition. There was a debate over the um number of curb cuts for the property. So there was, I believe, a recommendation from the planning department to reduce one of the curb cuts. We're asking the board to consider all four curb cuts, again, I will not get into the specifics. Um, it's my understanding that you don't wanna speak for the older, older woman, those are existing curb cuts that we asked to remain. Outside of that issue, I'm not aware of any opposition to the program being presented.
And at, and at this site, Nick, you, you did reach out, not, obviously, the Alderman knows about this, she's on the call? But you did reach out to the neighborhood groups and the block clubs, right, at, on this one?
On this one, it's an existing gas station that's been there for about thirty years, the owner has a working relationship with the older woman. And before I was even involved, the older woman had issued a letter of support for our program.
Perfect, I'm gonna cut this off, I do not wanna get into substance, so again, um, Alderwoman, thank you so much for your. And we'll reference it in the matter, and for anyone on the line, if you're going to object, you will be able to object on this matter, we just don't have to.
Exactly. Thank you so very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much for coming today, and, and stay well, Alderwoman, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, good, we're gonna move to a forty-minute recess, um, that brings us to one thirty PM Central Standard. Um, Commissioner Toya, seconds, Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
Perfect, I vote yes, see everyone at one thirty, thank you.
Thanks.
Shit.